One moment.
That was me, sorry.
Evening, everyone, and welcome to the two thousand twenty-five public hearing of the Cohasset Public Schools budget. In accordance with section thirty-eight N of chapter seventy-one of our general laws. The purpose of this hearing is to present the budget to the public and allow for public comment and discussion. And so at this point, I would ask that any members that are present, please indicate so in roll call, so that we can establish that we have a quorum. Mister Carr is not currently present, Mister Dial is not currently present, uh, Mrs. Hannah.
Present.
Mrs. Leskey. And the chair is present, giving us a quorum of three out of five. Members, so we will officially and formally call the public hearing to order. So at this time, I would turn the meeting to either our superintendent schools, Mrs. Sarah Shannon, or our director of finance and operations. I'm Susan Owen to present, uh. On the budget before we allow for comment and discussion.
So I'm gonna sort of take the lead and Sue will jump in where necessary or to answer questions. So this is a very similar presentation than what's been shared both here and at select board. Sorry, that's it. But I have added details just for clarity purposes.
Sorry, Superintendent Shannon, I just interrupt just to note, um, that it is being, this is being recorded, broadcast on one four three TV. Live streamed on Facebook and you can participate virtually using the Q and A feature on Zoom. Just want to make sure that everyone knows that, the upside. All right, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No, you're good. So again, it's just a little bit of an adjusted presentation to account for sort of where we are today versus where we were when we first presented a few a month or so ago. So. Really think it's important to continue to share what drives us as we think about creating the budget and really. Prioritizing the mission, vision and core values of the district. It's. You know, we are in a transition year this year, we have a bridge goal document that gets us from our. Strategic plan that's shown here that ended in twenty twenty-four to the new strategic plan that we're currently in the process of building. But. That said, our mission and vision and our core values, though they may shift a little bit at their heart, are still the same. And so between. That those documents and our budget priorities. We used these as drivers to make decisions for FY twenty-six budget. And we followed a process that was approved earlier in the school year to develop our budget. We started by really meeting with leadership and thinking about what the schools needed. What our priorities were. We knew because of the current situation for FY twenty-five that there would likely have to be reductions this year. And so we used our budget priorities to think about what those might be. Um, and then we continue to work together, both as a leadership team with the school committee. And with, um, select board and the town manager to continue to drive the plan for this coming school year. And so we are at the March nineteenth budget hearing. We actually are adding a a date in here, it's next Thursday, March twenty-seventh at seven P M where there'll be a vote on our fees. Uh, because tonight will just be a discussion and then April second. That is a regular school committee meeting and the vote for the budget will happen at that meeting. And then May twelfth will be the annual town meeting for the town here in the high school gym where it hopefully will be approved. On the gym floor. As we think about our budget and what our budgetary considerations and drivers are, there are several. Um, but these are the biggest ones that we have to think about, our contracted salaries are the biggest part of our budget. Um, special education costs also. A driver and a pretty big driver and a driver that is a bit outside of our control. Facilities and maintenance, class size, course offerings, transportation and fees, and so we'll address each of those as I go through. This is an overview of all of the. Cost centers. In our district. And it's broken down by those major categories, you can see, as I said, that salaries really. Take up the majority of our budget. There are some areas where you'll see in the presentation for our proposal for FY twenty-six, we have proposed some reductions, but there are also some places where we had to propose some increases as well. Because we know that those costs are going up, whether we want them to or not. Utilities, for instance, is a place where we really have no control over them, but costs, our usage is going down, but our costs are going up. Special education is an area where we have some control and we we have some. We are at the whim of some of our out of district placements, so as a district, we've really been working to create a. A system of support across the entire district to support our student needs as much as possible within the district. So as a result, we have supported classrooms with our educational support professionals, we have co-teaching. At almost all levels and in many subjects, and we have some partial inclusion programs with special educators and our ESPs. But we also have some students for whom we can't meet their needs within the district. And those students, we are legally required to pay for as out of district placements, and so they attend schools that are private. Out of district schools for students on IEPs and. They're great and they meet the needs of our students and their, um. Tuitions aren't as regulated as. They could be, and so in FY twenty-four, the tuitions for out of district placements actually went up fourteen percent. And FY twenty-five, they went up another four percent and they're anticipated to go up another three point six seven percent. We understand why their tuitions are going up, their costs are going up as well. Um, but they have a luxury of. Creating tuitions that are based on inflation rates where we do not. And so their increased costs make it really hard for us to keep up with the costs. That are rising for out of district placements because we receive. You know, around plus or minus four percent increase from the town each year. There is no way that increase can keep up with. You know, over almost twenty-two percent. Over the last three years. And yet we have to be sure that we actually. Pay these tuitions because this is what our students need, so that's something that we are really aware of and and taking into account. Um, in addition, we really are looking at facilities and maintenance. Utilities, just like at home, our utility costs are going up. Um, we have had folks in in our facilities department has been excellent in helping us decrease our usage. But that only has helped us to a certain point because even though our usage is going down, our costs are going up. Um, and we did take on some maintenance. Roles, um, in the district, we've worked with the facilities department to say what is going to be the facilities department, what is on our custodians? And after that, there are some costs that we had to assume, and so that is being built into the budget as well. We've really paid attention to class size and class size has gone down for us as a district over the last ten years. It's actually a trend across the nation, birth rates have gone down. Um, they're starting to come back up, you can see we use Nesdeck. They are an organization that projects out enrollment for. The next ten years, our enrollment numbers are gonna start going up because birth rates are coming back a little bit. Um, I think COVID helped with that just a little bit. Um, but it it's still something that we're watching because when class sizes. Go up and down, we have to accommodate them based on the number of teachers. And so we are looking closely at that and each level has ideal numbers of students. So in our Oscar School arcade, the two students, we really want to keep those class sizes between eighteen to twenty twenty-one at a max because. Those are our littlest kiddos who are really learning. Their foundational skills, they're learning to read, they're becoming math literate, and so the more we can have smaller class sizes there, the better. We feel better about class sizes twenty-one to twenty-four at Deer Hill because they're getting a little bit older. Um, and their skills are more developed. Middle school and high school, it's hard to just say we're we have a class size number. Because this is where students start to have choice and voice. And some students are choosing French and some students are choosing Spanish and some students are choosing. A calculus while some students are choosing statistics. And so as a district that really is trying to promote students finding their own path. And making decisions that are best suited to them so that they can be best prepared to go on to whatever is next. We can't just say, take, you know, a hundred students and divide by five because it doesn't work that way when they have choice. Um, but we are really aware of when we can potentially reduce staffing in order to have class sizes that feel more reasonable at a high school level. In a middle school level and similar to how the class sizes go up a little bit each time. It's more okay to have class sizes of twenty-five to twenty-seven to twenty-eight as you go from six to twelve. Um, we do, as I said, look at the numbers and so we have had several staffing shifts since COVID. Um, I think it's important here to note that while we have reduced staff, we have also brought on some new staff that may not look like. Classroom teacher staff. Because for two things, one is we have added some. Counseling staff at all levels, um. One of the things that has really shifted over the years, and I would say first started to shift as technology came. To be more of a front forefront of teenage and adolescent use. Um, we saw a rise at that point in. Student, um. Mental health concerns, anxieties, depressions, um, more issues amongst friendship groups. And. That hasn't changed. And then when we added on the impact of COVID. It just increased, and so we have seen this need to increase our, um. Counseling staff at all levels because even our youngest students. Are having school anxiety issues, they're having issues of anxiety, we're seeing evidence of trauma. And so as a school district, we have to attend to those needs so that our students can actually learn. Additionally, since COVID, we have added some specialists because they are helping to close the gaps. That came out of COVID with regard to literacy and math skills. And so far, those additions in specialist literacy and math specialists, we've reaped really great rewards. We have seen our our students' achievement levels getting higher, we have seen them come back. We are closing gaps, it's it's part of why. The high school received the blue ribbon award, you know, I know the high school received the blue ribbon award, but part of that is all the work that's been done up to high school. And we are one of only a few districts who can say that our MCAS scores are actually. At or above the levels they were pre-two thousand twenty. Um, and that is, I think, a direct result of some of the staff additions that we've brought to the table. Um, we also have staff that are funded through grants and revolving funds. One of the shifts, though, that has happened is that we have moved some. Teachers, specifically kindergarten teachers and kindergarten ESPs. Out of the revolving accounts and their salaries are now being paid out of the operating budget. Because two years ago, it was a decision of the district to have free kindergarten. And so those salaries no longer could be paid for out of the kindergarten revolving, so they are a part of the operating budget. We also really take pride in the fact that we offer a really comprehensive educational experience to our students pre-K through twelve. We value the arts, we value having a a robust phys ed and health curriculum. Having strong libraries and having a strong computer program. All the way elementary through high school. You know, one of the ways that we help our students with the. Social emotional needs they have as a result of the technology is through a strong technology curriculum and teaching them. About digital literacy and then as they get older, starting to teach them about computer science. That's one of the, um, most popular college. Majors and it's a profession that so many of our students want to go into, so you know, as we continue to grow the computer science program, that's something that. Does benefit everybody, um, and it is something that impacts our budget. We have a strong language program, um, and we have a really robust club activity and athletic offering. Transportation is another area where we're trying to balance our fiscal needs. Um, we currently have eight bus routes and eight leased buses and one leased electric bus. We do charge a fee for some of our students to ride the bus, we have to legally provide free transportation to our K through six students who are outside two miles. And so we do that, but we also take in a lot if in revenue with transportation. The hard part is like we are adding another bus. Route for next year because our we have several buses that are at capacity. And who have long rides, so in order to manage those two things, we're adding another bus. Our transportation is not making money at this point and it's not breaking even, so this is another area where we need to consider how do we balance. The needs with the budgetary considerations. I should say the bus parking lease has been a a hot topic in the community. That is something we have been paying, our buses are parked out on three A over by Abashon, but in the the empty lot next door. Um, and that has cost the district money, we are planning to bring the buses back to the school lot. We we know that that's an area where we can save money. Um, and so that decision has already been made, it is happening, we are still looking for a place. Where hopefully we could actually have the buses parked during the day just from like nine thirty to two thirty. Um, and they will stay overnight here at the high school. But tonight you're gonna find in our regular meeting, we're going to talk a lot about fees because in order to get to a balanced budget, we really do need to think not just about reductions, but any revenue increases that we can bring in. And so fees are something we'll be talking a bit about, um. Tonight and then voting on at the March twenty-seventh meeting. We'll be looking at athletic transportation, building rental fees, student parking fees, activity fees and full day kindergarten fees as well. Um, one of the things that we are trying to counter is the deficit that we have had this year in FY twenty-five. Through a series of. What's the, a perfect storm, right? We are at a place where this year we are well over our budgetary allocation. Uh, we are, we froze our budget early, but as you're gonna hear later tonight. Our our costs continue to rise, you know, during the winter, we had some really, really cold months, so. I think, you know, we had a month where it was like forty thousand dollars for utilities, we still have to pay that. Um, so those are costs that we can't avoid, um. But what we can do is think about how do we address this for next year so that we have a balanced budget. So our budget for next year, we know that we're going to be getting approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town. But we also know that we need approximately twenty-five million five hundred and thirty-five thousand and six hundred and eighty dollars in order to run the district next year. And I say approximately because we don't have a voted upon contract for next year yet. Um, and so we are. Looking at what we think might be the the cost of living increase for our our staff. So. Going into that with no negotiated increases. That's a deficit, we know we were gonna have a deficit no matter what because we're in a deficit this year. And so when you add in cost of living increases. Then we know that we need to start to identify at least one point two million dollars. To close that gap through either reductions or revenue resources. And so as a district, we've done that and we've worked together and I am really grateful to all of the district and school leaders for doing this, it was not easy work. Um, and it was really a collaborative effort and I think while it's easy to. Come to a table and advocate only for your school. I think our team came together and really advocated as a district, and so I'm grateful for everybody who was at the table and did that work. And so we know that there we are have at least five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of reductions that we can make. And then we will see if we need to make further reductions. Based on what fees get voted upon through school committee meetings next week, next week. Sue has really done a lot of work in building her budget workbook and so this is a. Overview of everything that, and I can make it just a little bit bigger, I think, um, maybe not, um. Of where we stand at the moment with potential increases to some line items. Like we know we need to increase the line item for our utilities budget. We know we need to increase our line item for our custodial supplies and materials for transportation, for special education. But just like at home, if we know we need to increase those line items, we know we need to decrease other line items, and so that's where you see those reductions below. We know we'll have approximately fifty thousand dollars in retirement savings. We're looking to reduce about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in supplies, materials, professional development, things that do matter to the district. But we had to make some really hard choices and our choices are really to reduce those things before we continue to do deeper cuts with regard to personnel. Um, and you'll see that there's some potential added revenue there. So we are still looking to to think about what that shortfall is and some of that will depend on what gets decided. Um, in the next couple of weeks. But we thought, and this is some new information, we thought it was important for people to start to see what the actual reductions in staff would be. Um, and I should say that the people who are impacted by this. I'm thinking their principals who have had these conversations, they're not easy conversations. We do not want to lose any staff, every staff member in this district is important, it makes a difference. And we had some really hard decisions. And so these are the positions that we have identified as reductions. For this coming school year. Um, the director of data curriculum and evaluation is a central office position. It's been a really valuable position, I think it has moved our data work tremendously. And. I think between Dr. Stallings and I and some of the principals, we can start to take on some of that work if we have to. We also have identified that we could reduce one point five custodial positions. Principal Gardette has said that we can reduce one ESP at Oxford and still meet our IEP requirements.
Superintendent, where there's a list there and we're.
You want me to just.
Four minutes, yeah, I think that, um, I guess I want to be able to.
Okay.
Provide at least a little opportunity for folks to make comment.
Yep. So this last slide is, we also identified some possible reduction. And this is the list that we would go to if we don't increase as many fees as we think we want. Um, and. I've already talked about the benefit that our specialists bring to the district. I think we're also trying to be really careful to not. Raise class size numbers, so we've tried to. Not include as many student facing positions, but this next layer of potential reductions. Would include some student, some additional student facing positions. So that's sort of where we are at the moment. So open it up for questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Shannon, um. So staying true to, uh, form, I would turn to. Members of the community first that have tuned in and as Superintendent Shannon stated. There is a full discussion on fees. As part of the regular meeting that will immediately follow this hearing, so it may make more sense while it is related to the budget and you're certainly. Welcome to make those comments now, I think it may make more sense to make those comments in conjunction with our discussion during the regular meeting, just a thought and a suggestion. With that said, if you are participating virtually, you can utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to make any of your comments or discussion points known, I'll monitor that. And then I'm looking at our audience and I don't see anyone other than perhaps our select board liaison that may want to make a remark, um. But anyone, Mrs. Mar, are you just here to observe or do you have a comment? Okay, and I know our faculty is here for as invited guests for the for the in our middle school principal is the for the first item on our agenda in the regular meeting, so. Just monitoring the Q and A. Function on Zoom, I'm not seeing anything, so at this point, I'd invite any committee members to make remarks at will. Regardless, or questions for Superintendent Shannon about anything she presented.
I would just say, like, continue to thank you for presenting, um, I think I've seen this presentation or a version of it several times now and learned something new each time. Um, and I think it's important that this this final part of your discussion tonight about what. What reductions mean, um, is really important for the community to understand. Um, because beyond the emotional part of these are people we know, they're part of our community, they're part of the educational community, they help raise our children. Um, it also impacts the academic, um, programming, even if it's done in the most careful way to try to have as least disruption as possible. So I appreciate that you put that forward because as we counter that with the discussion about fees, I think that that understanding what. It, the rejection of fees brings is is super.
Thank you, Miss Leskey. Ms. Hannah, do you have anything?
I think there's opportunities for revenue generating through the athletic department that we haven't ever explored. In this day and age, like. There's no reason why that shouldn't be revenue generating. Um, we bring, I mean, we're a small town, we have great athletes. You know, and we have a community here that has never even been given an opportunity to sponsor any. And so I do think like we're like nickel and diming around places, but like you can generate money with a strong athletic department. By doing field signage and a lot of other things and activations and you can make that a club for students. Um, you know, so I just, I think that there's other ways to be creative around actually generating money as opposed to going through and, you know, cutting any of these. You know, the art program or the high school.
So just to be clear, it's not cutting the art program.
Or the art teachers.
One of three art teachers, um, just to be clear.
Yeah.
I am not, and will now, I would like to say I was never cut in part. It's just one. And class sizes can.
Yeah, okay, I guess, sorry, the art teacher. Um, and that was just one, that's the one, the top, that last one there, I mean, it's the ESP, it's the the math specialist, like, all of that is critical, especially as we're trying to close this gap. On, you know, the the, um, testing and everything else and make sure that these kids, you know, do bounce back from COVID and strong life. So I just don't think that's ever been explored.
Um, thank you, Ms. Hannah, that's a great, uh, suggestion, actually, um. And I think that the. Diamond Club was considering something like that when they're trying to make some improvements to the varsity baseball diamond. You know, getting some additional money through sponsorships, it's a good, it's a good idea, actually, um, so we should. Explore that, um, in the meantime, as Mrs. Leskey's making her comment, um, a community member chimed in. Um, I've asked, um, them to state their residential address for the record. And I should just note. That if you are making, I I, this is my failure, I I neglected to mention this, if you are making a comment, please just, uh, at any point during this hearing or the school committee meeting, please note your residential address that's. Simply to memorialize the comment properly in the meeting minutes. Mister, uh, Scott McCoy of five seven two Jerusalem Road. He asked, have we considered proposing cuts to sports program? He asked, have we considered proposing cuts to sports programs? I uh, asked the clarifying question, does he mean like cutting certain sports? Um, but I imagine that this question, uh, while I wait for the response to that, I imagine that the question arose because we're presenting you know, anticipated cuts and um, it all centers around academics or, you know, uh, district costs. Um, so I don't know if this question is best directed to you Superintendent Shannon or someone, but have we considered cutting sports programs? Uh, he updated, said, my question is whether we can find savings with additional fees for sports. So I think that's sort of along the lines of what Ms. Hannah was just saying. So I don't know if that question was kind of addressed by Ms. Hannah's point that we could explore different revenue sources, the sports. But have we considered, he, his original person, so have we considered cutting?
We have not at this point.
Okay.
Um, it is certainly something if the committee was looking for us to do that, we could go, we could do that. Um, we have, we had a um, budget subcommittee meeting where we actually talked about seeing if we could get some sponsorship for the um, fitness center. Um, some other things like that because we thought that might be a really good opportunity. Especially, you know, well, it's mostly our students, our police officers also use it. So we get some coverage and we would certainly promote that. Um, but we did have that brief conversation and of course we are looking at increasing our athletic fee. And so we sort of went that road first to try and minimize any impact to the budget. Because the more we can increase the revolving account for athletics, then it doesn't actually impact the operating budget. And so the hope is that we can eventually get to a place where athletics is actually self-sustaining. And then we don't have to assume pieces of it.
Okay, thank you. Um, hopefully that answered um that individual's question. There's another question from Stephanie Saunders of ten Stratford Terrace. She asks whether we have considered installing solar panels to offset utility costs. We have explored the um, the potential for installing photovoltaic arrays on the roofs of our school buildings. I believe there was a study done within the last few years and the results were that the secondary building, meaning the middle sec, middle high school was the only building where from um, an energy efficiency perspective, it made sense to do so because of the number of, because the, the, the size of the array and the energy it would generate, that the roof could accommodate. Um, in addition, the age of the roof comes into play. You wouldn't necessarily want to install a brand new photovoltaic array on an aged roof. If you have a roof, you're gonna have to replace that. So um, that obviously implicates the new roof project we're contemplating at Ausgood. School where we were accepted by the accelerated repair program through the MSBA. And um, the MSBA uh, necessarily as part of their process, um, ensures that any plans for roof replacement are able to accommodate solar panel array, meaning the engineering of it can, can sort of bear the weight, whether it is from in energy efficiency, efficiency perspective, practicable, that's another inquiry. And while I just stated that in recent years, we've had the study done and it was, it seemed that the secondary school was the only building where it made sense from an ener, energy perspective. There are obviously advancements from year to year in the technology uh, of the efficiency of each panel. So that may have changed and as we're actually someone from the Alternative Energy Commission or Committee?
Committee.
Committee had contacted me in connection with the contemplated Ausgood project. And um, it prompted me to connect with Nick Parardi, our head of facilities, so that um, it's known that we're interested in reevaluating the uh, feasibility of that uh, project of solar panels on the Ausgood School where we're going to replace the roof anyway. So um, that's a long answer to your question, Ms. Saunders. The short answer was yes, but wanted to provide you a little bit more information. Mr. McCoy um, followed up and said that that answer did help as well as the superintendent's follow-up. Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Carr arrived at the meeting at six P M. Quickly for the, the regular meeting, we're still in the budget hearing because we're just going a little over here. Sorry, everyone. And sorry to our invited guests. Um, there's another comment in connection with the budget hearing from Neil Andrews of one seven one Hall Street. He asks, where do the fees that are collected at athletic games, both in season and during tournaments go?
So during the regular season and up until a certain point in the tournament, there are gate fees that are collected by the district that go directly into our revolving account for athletics. Once our teams hit that point in the tournament where the MIAA takes over, the MIAA takes those fees. Um, so that's everything where you're required to do the ticketing through GoFan. That goes to the MIAA, but everything else goes directly to the athletic revolving account right back into the athletic department.
Okay. Well, that, I believe, those are all the comments we have on the Q and A feature uh, for our virtual participants. I do not see any additional in-person participants walk in. So it's already six oh eight. I want to transition into the regular meeting. So at this point, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public, the two thousand twenty-five public hearing on the public schools budget. Motion has been made by Ms. Leskey, they're second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr, all in favor. I opposed sanctions. Meeting, uh, motion carries by a vote of four members that are present. And uh, the meeting is, the public hearing is adjourned. So we'll move right into our March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five school committee meeting. And I would ask uh, all committee members who are present to please indicate so in roll call, uh, indicate whether you're present or roll call, Mr. Carr.
Present.
In a moment, Mr. Dial is present now. Mr. Dial, can you hear? There he is.
Present, virtually, I can hear and be heard. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Dial. Mrs. Hannah. Mrs. Leskey. Chairs present, giving us a full panel of five members. I would formally call the meeting to order at this time. Would all who are able, please stand for the recitation of our nation's pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. At the outset, just as I did during the budget hearing, I've just state that the meeting is being recorded. Um, it is being live streamed on Facebook, broadcast on Tulsa one four three TV. One can participate virtually by clicking on the link that appears at the top of our agenda, which you can access online. Website. And you can participate virtually by utilizing the Q and A feature on Zoom to type in comment or question or discussion point. Um, which brings us to the first agenda item, which is public comment. This section is reserved for folks to make comments or air concerns that are not related to topics that are already on our agenda. If you have a concern or a discussion point or a question about a topic that's on the agenda, we just ask that you wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting and then we'll take your question. So I'll give folks a few moments to generate if they're participating virtually. Again, I don't see any in-person participants. Give everyone a moment to generate questions if they're watching it now. Not seeing any right now, but if you were just a little slow on the draw, if you're not, we will continue to monitor and uh, be happy to address any comments that come in later. So move on to the next block, which is the section of the agenda reserved for our invited guests. And we have uh, two members of our staff here, Ms. Jenna Lewin and Ms. Lisa Gittens Carl to talk to us about our very exciting middle and high school Washington DC trip. And I'm so, so sorry, the principal of our middle school, Mr. Mills is also here.
I'm here for moral support.
He's often called in as the muscle. So uh, we turn the meeting over to you, please. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for you. Thank you for having us. Um, so we are proposing that students in grade eight through twelve take a three-day trip to Washington DC. Um, this would happen in October of twenty twenty-five. We're thinking at the dates, the thirteenth through the fifteenth. We've reached out to Grand Classroom and we have an itinerary which is on, I don't know if you guys got this packet, it's on the last piece of packet. Um, but essentially we would be taking students to see all of the national monuments, the museums, um, as well as to see how our university and Morgan State University, which are HBCUs.
Great. Uh, is, Carl, do you have any uh, things, something that you're just supporting?
I said the same thing.
Okay.
She said it before me.
All right. Okay. Um, as um, as Ms. um, Lewin mentioned, uh, the materials outlined specifically the trip are in your packet. And while I can't physically locate mine right now, they are in there.
Be happy to talk about some of the details, train, the motor transportation, accommodations.
Sure, there may be questions about it anyway, so you may anticipate some of the questions because I certainly would have asked those. So please share, share whatever information you, you have and uh, and then the committee members will probably have questions anyway, but.
And if I could just, if you permit, so both Jenna and Alyssa came and they said, you know, as part of the work that we do with the inclusivity club at the middle school and the Black Student Union at the high school, trying to provide an opportunity for students who wish to go and explore some of the HBCUs and some of the history in DC that is specific to African-American and Black history. Um, this would be a really good opportunity. And so um, this is a pilot and it's gonna have a bit of a cap for numbers just for the first time, go around. But um, it's a really, I think, great idea to build some opportunities for students and opportunities for inclusivity. And it's open to all students. And I think they put together a really wonderful itinerary. It's incredibly thoughtful. Um, and I think it's sort of the tip of what could be, but I think it's, it's intentionally designed to be a pilot. It's something that I think is important so we can all learn from the experience as well.
I think it's important too because um, some of the books that the students read in their DLA classes, um, some of the history that they receive in the history classes. I think sometimes it doesn't really affect you until you see it in person. It's one thing to read it, it's another thing to see it in person, to see actual artifacts. Um, and so to have that experience, um, you know, there's so many of our students haven't had because it's not in our regular history. Um, I think it's important. So I think it's a great opportunity to give them um, an idea of what is up, what has happened, the pieces of history that have been left out. Uh, or that haven't been talked about as much. Um, and it also gives us an opportunity to see where we have been, where we are and where we need to go as far as really developing relationships and partnerships with each other.
And in terms of some of the details of the trip as well, we would be flying there. Um, and then obviously staying in hotel when we get there. Um, we have a bus through Grand Classroom as well as a tour guide which will take us through the city. Um, and then in terms of safety, we would have a um, security guard provided to us through Grand Classroom that would be in the hallways nightly and then would meet with us as well as another chaperone in the morning. Um, to provide us with any updates that they might have. And then in terms of medical um, needs, all of the grand classroom tour guides are first aid trained. But there also are many, uh, you know, clinics and hospitals in the DC area as well. Um, for how many students we are thinking, we are thinking we'd cap it around thirty. Um, with preference given to the upperclassmen because obviously we're thinking about going to college shores. Um, this might be relevant, a little bit more relevant to students that are closer to graduation. Um, but all students in grades eight through twelve would be welcome to join.
I think it's just worth mentioning too, Sarah had mentioned uh, that the relationship between the high school Black Student Union and the middle schools inclusivity club has gone really since they both were created. Uh, it's great because there is sort of a an older sibling, younger sibling relationship to a trip earlier in the year uh, with a grant that was provided. And uh, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. I love the fact that our middle school kids do get to be around high school kids and learn from them. In this trip, it's aged to twelve, our inclusivity is six through eight. But it's, and it's open to everybody. So it is, it's a, it's a, it's a great group and to take that group and give them this opportunity is wonderful. Open to anybody, but just to see these clubs at the heart of it, it's exciting.
Okay, thank you. So do any members of the committee have any questions? You can just ask them at will.
Um, if, if we can approve this, when, when would then you see the start to decide about participation?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I mean, I think our biggest hurdle would be fundraising for sure. Uh, so right now for opportunities for that, we were thinking, well, I wrote, but the two of us wrote a grant to the CEF. Obviously, that's pending approval. Um, but additionally, we run Mozai together. So we were thinking as having a booth there with information about the trip as a fundraising opportunity as well as having a popcorn fundraiser where students will um, sell popcorn and then have the proceeds go directly to their fund for the trip.
We also did the, oh, sorry, we also did the Austin Bridges Initiative, um, which was also a grant that we had received. Um, we actually used that grant um, earlier in the year when we took the group to see this, the movie Wicked. And then we talked about the themes of Wicked, how um, it currently mimics what we're dealing with in society. So it was a great opportunity for the students to have those conversations with each other as well.
And then for the cost, um, that would kind of be dependent on how many students were to join. So if twenty-five to twenty-nine students were coming, it would be one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. If it was thirty or more, it'd be one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars for a student.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, is it coming this week?
Yes, that Monday is. So it would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Yes.
When we did the Grand Canyon, I think that's the most recent one. And that was only the eighth graders, right? How many people went on that?
Uh, there were some years where it was uh, twenty to twenty-five. The last year we did it, it was forty. And it was caught, it was much more expensive than this.
Yeah, I guess that's um, it's just good to know, like, knowing that you want to cap it at thirty, it feels like it's really gonna be like a junior senior. Uh, and so I still think we're missing, like, the now eighth graders who will be ninth graders still have not gone on any field trip. And now seventh graders who will be eighth graders have not gone on any field trips outside of Cohasset. And so I still think we're missing a gap there on those two.
Well, that's a good point. So I, listen, I might have misunderstood. I, are you looking to cap it at thirty students or are you just saying that you're estimating that you'll get thirty students, but you could, it says thirty plus students was fortunate. So it contemplates that perhaps it'd be more than thirty students. Is it possible that we could accommodate more? Because that's a good point. I, I misunderstood if that's the case.
It's possible we could. Um, I think when, when we were just looking at the two groups, the inclusivity club and BSU, thirty was the number. Right, it is open to everyone. But originally when, you know, we thought, when we were coming up with the information, we were looking at that group. So there is a possibility that we could extend it. Um, because there are chaperones who are already asking.
Okay, so that's good. Thanks for reading that because you want to make, I mean, the whole point is that like, here. Mr. Mills, didn't we do a DC trip?
At the end of the year, last year, we did a small DC trip.
How many students?
For them now ninth graders. Yes.
Right.
Yeah, uh, about twenty.
Uh, and the only way we could make it happen was it happened after school dismissed the meeting.
Right.
It was almost July.
And we did that through Grand Classroom, as I remember.
Yeah. Yep. And then just a point about trips, uh, there is a scheduled eighth grade trip for, uh, Treetops Adventures for June, which is a great, uh, team building, uh, day. Uh, that would be the second year we've done that. In the seventh grade, uh, it's just proposing a field trip. The same thing in June is a team building to, uh, not to get the name right, but it's like, uh, Bodhi War, Bodha War. Uh, I don't speak much Swedish in northern, and that's, that's gonna be the same thing for the whole grade. It's gonna be a team building day as well. Our sixth grade went to Hall of Fame, Patriots Hall of Fame two weeks ago as part of the STEM slash team building. So all our kids are provided up to.
Anything else from anyone?
Um, I would just, um, say that one, I love DC. It's a place for students to go. I think there is so much to learn there and so much that's actually affordable and accessible, um, at the Smithsonian institutions. Um, so I love the concept of this trip. I love the monthly age concept of this trip. I think that that's really important. Um, but really what most excited me was the, um, having the possibility of making connections at HBCUs. I think too, if it's possible to, I know that it seems like the tour company is your liaison there, but it's possible for Cohasset staff to make connections there as well to help facilitate those relationships at even just two institu- two institutions, I think, could do huge things for, for our kids to start developing. Not necessarily pipelines, but relationships where if, if those schools are interested in students who are here, um, that there's some knowledge of this teeny little town in the coast of Massachusetts.
Right.
Um, at these major universities that could really be wonderful experiences for some of our students.
So actually last year towards the end of the year, um, myself and, um, one of the guidance counselors in the high school, we did participate in HBCU summit. Um, and so we had a chance to bring up with the students to the Reggie Lewis Center where there were about 30 HBCUs that were there. Students got an opportunity to ask questions, get the information. Um, at the summit, it was mostly guided counselors, um, and individuals who worked with, um, high schoolers who had an opportunity to meet with people from the various HBCUs. And some even had an opportunity to go visit some. So, uh, we're continuing those connections. So.
I just love how this just kind of gets feet on the ground, seeing a college campus can really be transformative. And I, I just love that element of this, uh, of this trip. And thank you for taking time away from the families with a bunch of middle school and high schoolers.
Just pray for us.
Okay, well, thank you both for, um, for being willing to do this and for organizing this opportunity for our students. I, I've said it before, I mean, this is, I think it's extremely important that our students are able to do this. I echo Masowski's sentiments that Washington DC presents a unique set of experiences and I would love to see us do this on an annual basis in some way, shape or form. We did it last year. I'd like to keep on doing that. It's really important that we're able to deliver that experience for our students. And it's just incredible to have faculty and staff that are willing to dedicate, you know, and volunteer their, their, their personal time to make this a reality for our kids. Two things, one, I, I always ask like safety related questions on these things and they kind of hit, our kids go away. Um, so it looks like there's a professional security company that's there, uh, that's great. If you could just, um, make sure that, uh, or if you could just please submit to central office of the school committee. Has the name of the company and confirm that they do, um, criminal background checks on their employees. I imagine they do if it's a production security company, but want to confirm that, make sure of it. Also, um, in hotels, obviously there are rooms that connect. We need to make sure that genders, different genders aren't in those two rooms that they can connect if they decide they want to do that themselves and open the doors. And the same thing for like little kids and big kids, maybe not having them, you know, joining in those situations. Um, so just some thoughts. And then getting into the weeds a little bit on the itinerary, there were two observations I wanted to offer. One is, I'm not sure. So at the end of, I think, the first day, there's some reflection time at the steps of Lincoln Memorial and reflection pool. The Lincoln Memorial in recent times, I don't know if it's, I don't know when it was gonna complete. They were doing a major project where you could get in, in the chamber underneath and they were gonna do tours underneath. So they were rehabbing the Lincoln Memorial. I don't know. I was there like a year ago and it was like well underway. I, I, I imagine it might be done. So you might want to explore whether that, that's like a new thing that like many people haven't even been able to experience. It'd be great if we could get our kids to take advantage of that if it's available. Who knows? Might have been a massive project. It takes like six years. I, I don't know. The other thing is that I noticed that the World War II Memorial is not on there. It's near a lot of the other ones that are named. We need to make sure that our kids see that. It's a magnificent memorial. It's, in my opinion, like one of the best ones they have there. Um, I mean, they're, they're all magnificent in their own right and, and extremely solemn and important, but the World War II Memorial is really fascinating and, um, a little bit more interactive because you can, like, they allow you to, like, take your socks and shoes off and sort of like, you know, there's like a reflection pool there with the fountains and, um, it's amazing memorial. So if you guys could ask them to sort of incorporate that, I think the kids would really like it.
Absolutely.
It would be an important part of the experience. Um, just a suggestion, but, um, I think everyone would like it. It's a really cool one. Uh, anything else? Mr. Dial, can you hear us? Do you have any questions?
I can hear you and see you and, uh, no questions. I'll just chime in with my, my, um, thanks for the, uh, the staff and the, in the initiative to, to bring these experiences to our kids. And I appreciate the discussion on making sure that all of our, all of our grades are getting these, uh, these opportunities. And I echo, uh, Mr. McCollum's, uh, comments about making sure that while our kids are in DC, they see all sorts of, um, the richness that that city can offer as far as history and perspective on our, on our country.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial. So, uh, imagine you are hoping to get an approval vote right now for the trip, right? Okay, so, um, just, um, bearing the ask that you just confirmed that about the security company notified central that, you know, who it is and that they confirm that they do criminal background checks. Um, is there a motion to approve the 2000, October 2025 Washington DC trip as presented tonight? Motion's been made by Mrs. Leskey, segmented by Ms. Hannah. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Extentions? That was an aye from you, Mr. Dial?
That was an aye from me.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
All right, moving right along into our superintendent updates, turn the meeting back over to our superintendent of schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon.
Thank you. And I, um, gonna toggle a little bit between just talking to you and sharing two quick videos, um, tonight. So first, last Wednesday, Chair McCollum and I attended the South Shore Roundtable Legislative Breakfast. The event was attended by all of the South Shore superintendents and our respective senators and representatives. We're very grateful to Senator O'Connor and Representative Machino for their attendance and support of our schools. The intent of this breakfast was to update all of our local politicians on our budgetary plates. As we've been talking about all year, the budget concerns that we have in Cohasset are being echoed across the Commonwealth. The cost of inflation, the loss of grant funding and the rising cost of out of district special ed tuition and transportation are untenable for the public schools. While we continue to be grateful for support and collaboration of the town, state and local funding formulas can't keep up with the rising cost of running a district. Hearing all of the local representatives and senators sharing their support and how they are working to support public school funding left us hopeful and we need to continue to work as a town to figure out how to meet these challenges until our elected officials are successful in securing this additional funding for the entire public school community across Massachusetts. I also wanted to share an update with regard to our district strategic planning process. Our group of 30 plus stakeholders with many, many students who are amazing um, have met twice now and will have our third meeting next Tuesday afternoon. And the two meetings that we've had so far, we've reviewed work that's been done in the district from the last strategic plan and the data that we gathered through the strategic planning process so far. Um, our task next week is to review and revise our mission, vision and core values. And from there, we'll start to identify our compass points and strategic, strategic objectives for 2025 and beyond. And we'll continue to keep you posted as our work continues and look forward to presenting a new strategic plan for Cohasset Public Schools to you in May. Yesterday, Dr. Scollins, Det and Alyssa Gittens-Carl and I attended the 20th Annual Women's Educational Leadership Network Conference that's put on by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. It was a powerful and inspiring day and we keep home very proud of the work that we do together and as a district. And we're looking forward to continuing that. Um, okay, now it's time for a video, but, um, last night I came to the Cohasset Public Schools All Chorus Night. It was a great celebration of our students' voices. This and tomorrow night's concert, which I'll talk about in a minute, are some of my favorite events because you get to see from third grade through 12th grade, the progression of music. Um, last night was chorus, tomorrow night is band. And it's amazing. And at the end, they all sing or perform together, one song. And what's fascinating to me is that they practice independently. And then they come together and they just do it. I mean, I know they practiced right before, but they ju- it sounds amazing and they've not been together as a whole group until this night. Um, but last night, everybody was wonderful. Uh, like, there was nobody that wasn't wonderful. However, there was one group that just sort of stole the show. And so I'm gonna show just a little clip because when I think about joy and smiles and just amazingness, this is evidence of that. And I'm now realizing like, if I turn on my sound, what's gonna happen?
Um.
Because you need to hear that.
I think it's going to echo. Um, let's try it and see what happens. That might change, yeah, that might change.
Right, let's see. And so it was wonderful. I think half the crowd was either singing along or swaying along. And so just like the joy that third and fifth graders can bring. It was awesome. Um, and so anyone who's looking for something to do tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, all band tonight. Um, another moment of pure joy was today. And Dr. Scollins and I took a trip down to Osgood. And we went to a Mr. Dykis dance party. And so we got to see Mrs. DeLeo's class put their party on. It was so much fun. The dancing was amazing. But what was amazing to really reflect on is how, in addition to it being joyful and fun, the students are exhibiting all of what they're really learning through this ed and all that Mr. Dykis provides. They're learning to, you know, be coordinated. They're learning movement. They're learning how to take in multi-step instructions. They're learning to remember. They're learning to be resilient so that when they can't get the dance moves the first time, they keep practicing and practicing and practicing. They're learning to perform in front of an audience. All of those skills in grades pre-K through two are unbelievable. And I think a lot of us as parents, and I'll put myself in that category, go to the dance party because we love it and there's so much joy. And we don't necessarily see all the skill building that Mr. Dykis does in the backgrounds and that the kids are gaining. And I think it's really important that we call attention to that. So I'm grateful for Mr. Dykis for the seamless way that he incorporates learning into something that brings so many smiles to the community. Um, he asked, because this was a second grade, second grade class, he asked for how many families it was their last dance party. And it is such a bittersweet moment when it is your last Mr. Dykis dance party. Um, so I'm just gonna show a small clip of the dance party because those of us who have not had kids in Osgood for a long time just need to see what it's, it's the same. It's amazing.
Being informed, the sound isn't really coming through on Zoom, but you know.
Okay.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay, I'll just show it then.
Number 13 out of 18 for him, 18 dance parties he's gonna have this week.
You know, it's not even playing, so. I, but there's a cute little picture of it. Um, I will say, just sort of fun, I, I took this clip and I did throw it in my family chat and, um, my children all commented that both of them, they're remembering it and, oh my goodness, is Mr. Dykis still doing that? And so it's just this time honored tradition here in Cohasset. Um, and I would like to just also, um, mention that on, well, tomorrow, Thursday, Dr. Scollins, our MECO Director Alyssa Gittens-Carl and Chair McCollum and I will all be attending the MECO Advocacy Day at the State House. Um, our MECO program is an essential part of our district. Not just our district, but many districts across the state. And so we feel it's really important to be there tomorrow to advocate for funding and legislative support to continue to grow and enhance the program. Um, and lastly, I just want to take a moment to follow up on something from our last meeting. Last meeting, um, we were asked a question to find out if there was any time where a girls athletic team had been given, um, boys' uniforms instead of girls' uniforms. And I wanted to let the community know that I did investigate this claim and found that within the time of our current high school administration, um, it was hard to go back before that. Um, this has not happened. While we do pass varsity uniforms down to JV teams, they are passed down to JV teams of the same gender. Um, we have not passed any boys' uniforms down to any girls' teams. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Shannon. Any questions from any members of Superintendent Shannon? Just ask it, Will, if you do have any. All right, seeing none, we'll move, uh, into the next agenda block to keep the meeting moving. I know there are some community members that are eager to sort of start talking about the fees, so we'll just keep on moving here. And, uh, that is our, uh, our teaching and learning section. And we ask Dr. Leslie Scollins to please take the helm here. She presents some academic updates.
So last week, we had professional development. So those parents know that we had a half day and then no school on Friday. Um, on the half day, the middle and high school continued their work with benchmark assessments and the elementary schools did building daytime. A lot of them worked with the math specialists around fluency and, um, it was, you know, a well, a well-planned day. On Friday, we had the, uh, company called Essential Partners come in and they worked for their high school and middle school staff as well as our leadership team. Um, and for the middle and high school, it was really around how do, um, we have constructive conversations in classrooms and in the community. So in the community. And then we, uh, leadership, um, worked to, uh, learn more about a dialogue protocol and how to have conversations and ask questions and frame questions in a way that, um, yeah, the, uh, get full information and engage in work that allows us to hear listen to, um, all different stakeholders and kind of pull it all together. So, um, that was a wonderful day and we were, um, fortunate to get a generous donation from the Cohasseters to support us with that. And at the end of the day, um, well, before I get to the end of the day, um, the elementary staff worked with TLA, um, they've been working with that for a couple of years. Uh, along with the REE specialist, each building did work specific to where they are in the process around our comprehensive literacy approach. So Deer Hill focused on writing and they've been doing a lot of that work all year. And then the Osgoods will look at really what are their accomplishments this year with the workshop. And then the Osgoods will look at really what are their accomplishments this year with the workshop. Always so important to reflect on the things that are that have gone well and then also looked at how to work with small groups and continue that work on interventions and small group instruction. At the end of the day, we came back, all, all staff in the district came to the high school and we had our final circle of the year. And that has just been a really nice way for us to get to know each other across the district. So each community circle is made up of staff from all age groups. And so at the end of mine, we were, we were very chatty. They asked if we would continue it next year and if they could stay in the same group. And I thought, and I asked why, and they said, we're just getting to know each other. And so they really valued that time together and to learn about each other. And so that was really such a great part of the day. It's just a nice way to end it as we go into the weekend. Everyone's happy and it's just nice. And then, and cast begin next week, so it starts with our high school, ELA, on March 25th or 26th. If you are looking for the calendar, it is under Teaching and Learning. I know principals have pushed it out, but there is a calendar on the website under Teaching and Learning, under the Cast tab. You can pull that up. I won't show the calendar, so unless you want me to pull the calendar up for everybody to see it. It's been pushed out for a while. I just said it starts next week.
And that's it. All of our students, for those of us that have students in the school, have been reminding us of that.
Yeah. Everybody's prepared.
At least the school families are well aware of that. Is that, does that conclude your report, Dr. Scollins?
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Scollins, anyone? Alright, seeing none, we will continue right along into the Budget Resources and Governance block of our agenda. The first item in this block of our agenda is a budget update. So where we just had the budget hearing, Mrs. Owen, I'd ask you to sort of give a pretty high-level budget report because I know there's a lot of community members that are eager to hear about the next section and chime in. So, but turn it to you to provide the monthly update. Mrs. Owen, Director of Finance Operations.
Sure, thank you. So this is the FY25 February Finance Report. It talks about when our actual school budget was voted, what we've spent to date. We've expended fourteen million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. With encumbrances for supplies, materials, and main payrolls totaling approximately ten million, nine thirty-two, seven five one. This results in estimated shortfall that has grown slightly from eight hundred and seventeen thousand, zero seven one to eight ninety-five, eight ninety-four, eight ten, which is an increase over the last month. And as Superintendent Shannon said, there are, there are just some expenses that we can't, we can't freeze. We can't freeze utilities. We can't estimate substitute teachers. When custodian says supplies, materials, we still have to supply them. Same thing with, you know, classroom instruction materials that are necessary for the class and we have to supply. Definitely that shortfall is, is growing. We're closely watching everything. And as was mentioned earlier, we froze our budget very early back in November. We are not allowing any budget overrides without both the superintendent and my approval. Frank purchases are going through. So there's two sets of eyes on everything. It's, it's increasing our deficit. A special education tuition, there was a shortfall last month. There was a shortfall of a hundred and eighty thousand, nine thirty-five in tuition cards, which remained unchanged from last month, which was good. Additionally, the spec transportation shortfall has also helped steady over the past few months. So that's one area that we also watch. The budget line items are having shortfalls at the moment. You can see the spend, special education tuitions. It hasn't changed. Our utilities, you can see has changed. It's gone from one fifty-four, one seventy-eight to one ninety-five, nine one five. Sped transportation has not changed by a few hundred dollars. Custodial supplies, materials have increased by about eight thousand dollars. And then our salaries, which are the unpredicted, you know, substitutes and such. The next group is just a school breakdown. And it shows you each school and what their budget was, what they've expended, what they've encumbered, and what their balance is. And what percentage of the budget they have utilized. And it also gives you the number of FTEs supported, full-time, previously. They're just supported by the school budget. Circuit breaker, there's been no change. We've received two payments out of four that will continue to come in to the rest of the year. We'll get two more payments. And hopefully we'll lucky an extra payment. And that capital, so this report was for February, but our capital has now changed. So I can brief you. So capital thankfully approved our eight bus lease. Instead of the ninety thousand that they contributed to us each year, they're now agreeing to cover the whole lease of our eight buses, which is a huge help to us. They're also continuing to cover the twenty-five thousand of our three electric bus. They approved one additional bus. So we can add a nine three because about some of our bus routes are at capacity right now. We had asked for two district van slash activity buses. They approved one, which is tremendous. We've been hoping for one of those for several years now and that was certainly helping a lot of the, oh, I love the athletic trips that we have been able to have outside outsource. They approved the interactive whiteboards, half of Osgood and half of Deer Hill. And then next year we'll complete the other half and then all of our schools will be up to date. The security enhancement, so there were several PA system upgrades that needed to happen or weren't in existence at all in Osgood and Deer Hill. They approved that as well as security enhancement, enhancement at the middle high school and the Deer Hill school, rich in cameras and other type of safety mechanisms. They approved the furniture. She, we had initially moved the Osgood iPad to the following year in the window shades. The other thing that they did approve, it, it's coming out of our capital stabilization fund of seventy-five thousand dollars to finally complete the extension of the Point Street sidewalk. It's at the end of Pond Street with it, it's grass right now. And then it becomes a sidewalk, so they, they awarded seventy-five thousand for that. So that's all good news. They approved, I think, everything that we put on our list. And we're gonna pilot the activity bus and see how it goes. And if it works out well. This is just a breakdown of our federal state grants to a food circuit breaker. We are not a district that receives a lot of grant funding. And each year, it's, some of the grants decrease or go away with October 1. And usually our special education grants grow, which is, was nice. And our MECO grant is a growth. We have now multiple different MECO grants slash revenues coming in for different different things. We have our regular MECO program. We have MECO Peak, which just gave us fifteen thousand dollars. And then we have the MECO, we started Justice. These are revolving funds. What we bring in, what our, what our carryover balances were, what we've expended, what's encumbered, and what the fund balances does. So you will see the after-school currently is a deficit of eleven thousand, two thirty-four. That's because we only get transfers overall. I think we only had one transfer of revenue this year, so there'll be more to come by the end of the year and that deficit will go away. School athletics, which is a known topic for us to discuss. That revolving is running right now about a hundred and two thousand this spring. All the spring revenue has not been deposited yet. And there's some more gate receipts finishing up the winter sports that will be going to be deposited. And what happens is, which Superintendent Shannon mentioned, when the revolving fund hits a deficit at the end of the year, we can't leave this deficit, so the school budget has to absorb that one. Which is why we're talking about fees. The other one, you can see, which running deficits, the school transportation law, which is also on our list of discussions with these. And none of our revenue counts are holding high balances. Over the last few years, we have definitely utilized as much as we can to help support the district. Even the school lunch program, I mean, still carries a pretty decent balance. But there's still more, there's so much to be done in that area. This is just a breakdown by category, by headcount and by full-time equivalency. How many staff we have in each, each category hasn't changed in all this year. It's just a summary personnel by type. So regular education, maybe special education, and then salaries, and then unstructured itself. And you can see in the pie chart here that regular education salaries make up the majority of our budget. And then to give more detail, the school, it shows you here how many staff we have at each school and when the budget funded, what grant and revolving funded. We've added a column to divide out grants revolving coming up for the next, the next report, so you'll see it open down even deeper. Here it is. I guess I included it. And then it's the middle and high school and then district-wide, which was not included in the past reports. So it shows you what positions are funded by the budget, what positions are funded by grants, and what positions are funded by revolving. Again, this is just a summary of grants. Which, yes, they are. And a summary revolving. And how we have to even headcount. And Roma from March. And it shows you the elementary class sizes. And then we have month-to-month enrollment from October through March. And then we have our utilities summaries, so you can see for electricity. We have definitely spent a lot more in cost through the winter months, but our usage is almost the same. And then the gas, I believe, has gone down. So gas, we spent a little bit less and we actually utilized a little bit less. So we are trying to do everything we can and work facilities to bring our utility costs down and bring our usage down, just because the rates are so high. And here is a breakdown of food service. And you can see we're at sixty percent participation for lunch now versus last, last year, we were at fifty-five percent. And I just gave you February's breakdown, January's, December's. You can follow, you can follow to see how, how the participate, participation of the kids grow. I think I was told yesterday we're the biggest seller. They sold about five hundred Oreo bowls. Oreo bowls were a big hit this year. And this is just somewhat, you know, some of the things it's doing. So here's kale growing in our guiding tower. And here's the kale actually being utilized in kitchens. This is the beginning of our pizza. So you can see it's freshly made, ready to go. On the pizza oven. We're actually making pizzas, so off the scratch. And the favorite cinnamon rolls. They seem to be a big hit as well. Again, they're making them off the scratch. And then the last little treat. Just to brighten up some of the downside of budget point, you know, show some of the fun stuff that's going on as well. Transportation, we're currently reviewing our needs. We have asked for an additional bus. We have been granted an additional bus, which is great. We're surpassing our Bloomberg and our mini bus. And we are in the process of trying to either trade in or sell seventy V M on to bring down the cost of the additional bus. At this stage, there are concerns, been concerns all year regarding utilities, transportation, tuition, and our salaries. But we have closely monitored and with our FY26 budget presentation, we're hopeful that I should say, hopefully we will be closing that gap and having, having a balanced budget for next year.
Any questions for Ms. Owen on the monthly update, Mr. Carr?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial, do you have any questions for Ms. Owen on the, on the monthly update?
I do not, thank you.
Ms. Hannah?
I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah and Ms. Leskey. Ms. Owen, I, I, oh, and also, could I ask, Mrs. Mar, the chairperson of our select board is present. Ms. Mar, could you, I view her as somewhat of an expert in municipal budgeting. Could you join the group, take a seat so that you could participate in discussion a little bit more? Mrs. Owen, so I'm, I'm becoming increasingly alarmed at the growing shortfall. Like, it's already bad enough and we're gonna have to, like, edit that presentation. I mean, it's, it's going up. How do we, are there, can we brainstorm ways to, I mean, we've instituted a budget freeze. How are we stop, how are we gonna stop this bleeding? Because it's, I mean, it's, it's only March, right? So, and that was, that's like February's numbers. I mean, we're, we're gonna be into seven figures here in no time. And things are already bad enough. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, can, can we brainstorm here on how to? We cannot keep increasing this seventy thousand dollar month. Or whatever it was. Excuse me? Okay, alright. So what, what, what can be done? And Ms. Mar, feel free to join if you have any, any bright ideas as well, but are there any thoughts on this? I mean, we can't, I, I'm like, we're coming back here every month and it's growing. This, 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 like, this monster is getting bigger and bigger. So what, what are we gonna do about this?
So I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that that's the current number. And as we get closer to June, there will be ways to bring that number down. So we know that there's a hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker money that can be applied to this to bring that down a hundred thousand dollars. We think there will be, because this Owen, over encumbered salaries. So while then, yes, we need to continue to think about how to stop that. There are some things like utilities, like toilet paper that we can't not purchase.
Would we say utilities is a major driver of that right now? I mean, what is the, have we broken down what is accounting for these monthly increases in the shortfall?
It's utilities. I mean, we've identified, and there's utilities, it's transportation, it's athletics.
It's some special. You know, you know, we have had move-ins who come to the district without a district placements. When they move into the district, we have to assume those costs. And so they're completely unanticipated. That does drive the number up. You know, Sue and I have started to make a list of where we think we will be able to bring those numbers down by the end of June. Question is gonna be, is how far can we bring that number down?
What about a little bit more of a creative deployment of our revolving, especially like we have?
We've talked about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that was discussed during the legislative conference that we attended. And so just, you know, you know, there are a few revolving accounts that are a little healthier than others, one in particular. There may be ways to, okay, okay, so creatively deploy those assets that we might be able to offset some bleeding in that way.
Yeah, Superintendent Shannon said, as we get closer to June and see what the numbers really are. You know, if we have, we have staff that go on unpaid leaves or medical leaves but don't return or maternity leaves and don't return, the savings there. If someone resigns now, when most times we're not rehiring. We had a savings for the elementary team chair.
About thirty-seven thousand dollars there. About thirty-seven thousand dollars there.
And then what, what happens is when we get to the end of the year, we can see what the revolving accounts look like. We can, we can charge off certain things. So we can charge off, you know, a percentage of custodian to save cafeteria.
Sure.
Some utilities to cafeteria and, and Mr. Cordon and I, we did do that in small bits last year. He came up with a number which seemed fair. And we did, we shifted it right over.
Even part portions of salaries for staff that wanted their lunch?
Yeah, yes. So I mean, other than that, we're open to ideas. I mean, we're, we're watching everything that's said, you know. And whatever supplies, materials comes in, it's five to seven thousand dollars for custodian stuff. And we can't not supply toilet paper, towels, cleaning supplies, tissues. And then nurse supplies come through. We can't, we can't deny any of those things, so.
We have looked at, and it doesn't help us right, well, it can start to help us right now. But we've looked at shifting our supplier for a lot of those things. And there's a potential cost savings of ten thousand dollars in shifting suppliers. So we are looking at those moves. I'm not sure how much is gonna help us between now and the end of the year, but we are trying to find all the ways we can.
Alright, I mean, this is what it is. It's grim. It's just that I, I, you know, I'm looking last time, it's going from the seven hundreds to the eight hundreds. Now it's, we're about a nine hundred. It's just like, it's, it's, it's like veering out of control. I mean, there is a, out of control. It's starting to like roll over on its side and it's just, it's, it's nuts. Okay. Well, let's, and, and, and so, and so there is a way to identify, like, like you've given us some of the other pie charts. What, what represents the majority of these increases from month to month? I imagine it is probably utilities. I, I don't know what else. I mean, it's a lot of money. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what it is. And if we're able to identify some of the more prominent factors, we may be able to devise ways to offset those. Oh, I'm sorry.
One more. Oh, I, I actually do have a question relevant to what you're saying. So I went through and you included, at least in our materials, the, the town of capacity summary report. And when I look at the, like, the percentage expended already. I'm, I'm assuming, because I feel like we've had the hundredth day of school celebration, that we're, you know, halfway, three quarters of the way through, and yet some of these budgets have expended themselves at ninety-five percent, a hundred and seventeen percent. Yeah, a hundred and seventy-nine percent. What, I'd like, is that even more, like, that to me was, was a little heart-stopping. Not only are things growing, but that we've already far exceeded sometimes by over a hundred percent. We're close to a hundred percent what was budgeted for this year. So that, like, it's, it, it feels like this is only going to get worse. I'm not an mathematician. I, I always claim, but when I look at that piece, that felt like, even with a frozen budget, that we're already exceeding our budget dramatically in summer. Like well beyond the percentage of the school year that's passed.
And we talked about it in my report, like, you know, special education tuitions are over by a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Unanticipated, right. Nothing we can do about utilities. A hundred and twenty-eight percent utilized. We're a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars over utilities. We're asking obviously FY twenty-six for those areas to be increased, so we're more aligned with what we're spending. But for this year, there really isn't anything we can use to stop, to stop those. But you're right, you know, special transportation again is a hundred and twenty-nine percent. Again, something that we cannot control. If we have, you know, a child that needs to be transported, we have to transport anyway. But we must see out the contractors who have no regulation on what they can charge. It just, it wouldn't be charged if they weren't charged. And we tried, you know, we tried with our own seventy van. And it just didn't work. It was such a small district and we had one van and one driver. So if that person was out, then we had to contract out transportation for the child and it was too disruptive. So we decided it was better off just to contract out. Because it was becoming too costly and couldn't provide consistent transportation.
Okay. I wanna get started on the, on the fees discussion that everyone's waiting for. I, I imagine there may be a few comments from people that have been watching the meeting. But before we, before we do that, I just wanted to note on the record how grateful we are to capital budget, because this is a, an incredibly challenging fiscal situation for the schools. So to be able to add resources of any type right now is an enormous victory. And not only are we adding resources, but actually they're taking on the burden of some costs, which also helps us. And I, I found the, the capital budget, the current capital budget committee to be extremely supportive of the schools. They were incredibly thorough and, and I think that their support is evidenced by the decisions that they made. And we're really, really grateful. I think that it's gonna enable, that the ninth bus is gonna be huge and as well as the, the vans. I think it might, it will broaden some horizons for us in terms of transportation and opportunities for students. So thank you, a sincere thanks to the capital budget committee for that. Because this is a dire circumstance, but we're actually able to, I mean, we're talking about reducing our force, but we're actually able to add a few resources here because of what they were able to deliver to the school district. So thank you. Alright, moving on to fees, I imagine our superintendent has a proposal. I mean, excuse me, a presentation on fees.
So I guess my question to you is, it's the same presentation. Do you want me to repeat it or do, or at a very high level?
I think at a very high level, just because there may be some people that are watching that weren't able to attend or watch their going from the last one. So I will note that while Superintendent will give the sort of Cliff's Notes version of this presentation. It is presented in full at the last meeting. So you can go back and watch that. We're not making any decisions tonight, as we noted in our district email, on any of the fees. This additional hearing is to invite supplementary or, or, or additional feedback from our constituency about their feelings, insights, perspective on fees. We're not going to make a decision until our special meeting, which is only going to focus on fees on March twenty-seventh. And we'll advertise that independently. You'll be well aware of when that, when and how that's gonna happen. But tonight, we're just discussing it. So Superintendent, please, just however you want, summarize that and then we'll get right into comments and questions from our families that are watching.
So yeah, so, and if anyone has, if I don't go deep enough and families at home have questions, please use the chat feature. So this is a, just a overview again of where we are. And we are trying to close at least a one point two million dollar gap through a combination of reductions and revenue increases, which per schools is fees at this point. So fees that we are looking to have conversation about, the first one is kindergarten. In FY twenty-four, the district moved from a fee-based full-day kindergarten to free kindergarten. While there was some conversation with the Department of Ed around how that shift could benefit financially the district. There was, this happened prior to me, there was a, a funding formula shift that resulted in not that financial gain. And so as a result, the budget really didn't adapt to accommodate the loss of that revenue. And the staffing had to be absorbed into the operating budget. So there is a conversation to be had about reinstituting full-day kindergarten fees to potentially offset our budget deficit. We did do a, a scan of the area and a little beyond for who is still charging kindergarten fees. This is the list that we have of who's still charging fees. You know, philosophically, I don't think anyone wants to charge for full-day kindergarten. And yet it is something that our budget wasn't really prepared to hold the way it ended up coming at us. And so if, I would propose that if we were to reinstitute kindergarten fees, we would look to over a three or five-year period of time, try to get back to potentially not having kindergarten fees. But because philosophically, that is the right thing to do. Financially, we're in a difficult place. We are looking at transportation fees. We are one of the higher transportation fee districts. But as you saw in multiple places, we do have a shortfall with regard to transportation in our revolving account. And so looking at different proposals for potential increases to the transportation fee and how that could offset some of our deficit in the transportation area. These are the area transportation fees. Hingham will supersede us at our current fee for the fall of FY twenty-six at three hundred and sixty dollars. So, you know, if we were to increase fees, we would again be the highest in the area. Our current ridership, our ridership is going up. You know, I think as more and more families are required to go back into an office setting. I think that's part of why our ridership is going up and something to, to consider. Again, this, this has already been addressed by Ms. Owen about our transportation costs and the deficit that we are running. And our concerns, we are getting a new bus. We will be able to reduce our ridership on some of our really full groups and reduce their time. I think we also are trying to bring our, not trying to, we are bringing our buses back to the middle school, high school facility, which will save us forty-eight thousand dollars per year. We are looking to increase our athletic fee proposal. We did a, a, a big study on this. It's here actually where we fall with regard to athletic fees. A lot of our district partners or just, or peer districts have multi-tiered athletic fees because the cost for running athletics does differ. And so we are looking at two tiers for athletic fees rather than one. And again, that increased revenue would help offset the deficit that, and that's not a current deficit because this isn't, this is from March and we're at a different place. And this is last year. We are, I believe, what we saw earlier was we're about a hundred thousand dollars deficit currently with our athletic revolving account, but we will be taking in some additional spring sport fees and gate fees, so that will shift again. But again, an area where we are not, our revolving account is not covering all of our athletic needs. We do take in gate fees. I had addressed this during the budget hearing part of the evening. Our gate fees do go towards our athletic revolving account. They do help support the athletic department. We found that we are very much aligned with area districts with regard to gate fees, so we are not actually proposing a gate fee increase. We are looking at a potential new fee, a student activity fee. This is something that we have found that our area, you know, peers are doing. This would cover the cost of clubs. Some of, it would allow students, it would incorporate the student gate fees for sports. It would also cover some of the other non-sport activities that our students do throughout the school year that we currently don't charge for, but that does cost the district money. So we're proposing sixty dollars at the middle school per student and a hundred dollars per student at the high school.
Just to me interrupt you just while you're in the middle of things. If I could just mention to anyone watching at home that's planning on commenting or asking questions. Feel free to start typing those in now and then they're already generated. When Superintendent Shannon is done presenting, we'll take them in the order that they came in. Also, please remember to type your name and street address for the meeting minutes. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
We are proposing a new student parking fee. We currently don't have a student parking fee. Most of the area schools do. You can see on this chart that one who doesn't is considering it for this coming school year along with us. And we are proposing a two dollar per day to park at the high school. It would be prorated based on when students get their spot or their license. And that would bring us potentially a total of forty thousand dollars per year. We are also looking at building rental fees right now. It's not a huge revenue source for the district, but it is a, a revenue source. And with the increased costs of utilities and maintenance and supplies. We are looking at raising that fee as well to cover, to cover our costs. We recognize that this might mean that those who rent the building may need to increase their fees. But it's hard for us to justify losing money to outside organizations. And so there's a proposal here for what those increases could look like. And again, you know, the hope is that as we consider these fees, there's a potential of, you know, closing our revenue gap or our budget gap helping about half of it. And so I would open the conversation up to questions and ideas and conversation. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, but I can bring this up at any time.
That's perfect. Thank you, Superintendent Shannon. Okay, we'll go around the table. I don't, I don't see, amazingly, I don't see any comments from any members of the community, although our chairperson of the select board is here as a community member. I don't know if you have any questions or comments. I, we always defer to the community before we go around. Okay. Alright, so Mr. Carr, do you have any comments or questions or?
I would only mention that we did meet as a subcommittee and go through these line by line to brainstorm some ideas about what, what makes sense and what doesn't. It was a robust conversation, but this is consistently what we discussed.
Thanks, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial, are you out there?
I'm here. There I am. So thank you. I have a question and then a comment. The question is, and I think we touched on this last time, but I didn't see the update. The idea for getting funded kindergarten fees came about because we had the view that chapter seventy funding would increase as we made it free kindergarten. It wasn't that we didn't get anything. I think it came in below what we expected. So I just wanna get a right, the correct number on the potential savings, because if we then charge for kindergarten again, we lose whatever increase we did get. So do we have an idea of what that increase is? Because it's not gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar savings. It's gonna be, I'm, if my memory serves, it's probably gonna be in the order of like one fifty, one seventy savings, because I think there was like a hundred and twenty grand of, that did come through, chapter seventy increase.
I don't know, but I can definitely reach out and, and find out in the hopes that the formula doesn't change again.
Right, I mean, we can, we can obviously estimate on the, well, it wasn't necessarily a change in the formulas. It was the plugging in the, the inflation rate. And the inflation rate was so high, it hit a cap and it, it came into lower numbers than we expected. But I guess it'd be important to me to understand exactly what that, that number is. Although on my comment side of things, I guess I would say that I am in favor of all of these fees, except for the kindergarten. I have a couple, I have a strong feeling on the kindergarten fee. I know it's the biggest line item and would be the most helpful for our budget and I feel that weight. But I also feel like we made a, made a commitment to the community to have free kindergarten, that the town funded this so that we could do it. And I feel like we need to live up to that. And I also don't think it's fair for the kindergarten families to bear the burden of our overall budget, just because we're allowed to charge them. So I think we need to think that into, into consideration as well. And I know that puts us in a more difficult and more challenging budget situation than it would be if we do increase that fee. But I think that's an unfair burden for a small segment of our community because we have high utility costs and high special ed costs and high costs that are subject to state issues, not necessarily, you know, what's going on in kindergarten. uh, costs that are subject to state issues, not necessarily, you know, what's going on in kindergarten. The balance of the fees seem to be tied to the um, to the specific functions of the school where the people who are paying the fees are getting the benefits. So I can, I can get behind that. So um, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Um, but that's a really good point. So and so like, we need to know what the action before we go to or consider increasing kindergarten tuition. Um, we need to know what the actual benefit would be. Right? Because if there was, Mr. Dial was basically saying, we're receiving a hundred fifty each of seventy and then that money's going to go away, then we're not actually realizing three hundred thousand dollars, but only realizing a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is is perhaps still attractive in this particular situation, but um, but it would be, I think, I think it's an important figure to know with certainty. Okay. Thank you. So before we move on to Ms. Hannah, um, someone from the community chairman, I just want to take that question. Um, so um, Mrs. Kate Rennie of Nine Forest Notch states that the athletic fee budget slash expense slide doesn't seem to be in the posted materials. So Superintendent Shannon, maybe you can um, you can get it there, but also maybe can we put it back up right now? Do you have that slide back up?
Yep. So although I can answer with, it's not on that slide, but I can answer.
Okay, there seemed to be, uh, there seemed to, I think she means be higher expenses than budget for coaches. How are the budget for coaches and the number of coaches per team decided?
Yep. So um, I will pull that up in in one minute, but the number of coaches and the salary for coaches are determined by the contract. So our teacher's contract identifies how much each coach makes and which positions are available by contract. So I think it's also important to note that we have many volunteer coaches um, who actually are on coaching staffs, but don't get paid um, or receive of an honorarium through the boosters. Um, so that's, that's how it's determined. It's all contract.
We'll just pull that up so that Mrs. Rennie can look at that. She may have a follow-up question after she comes to the slide.
And just so that people know, this, this slide is from last year, not this year.
So while um, Mrs. Rennie and others look at that slide, Mrs. Hannah, do you have any um, thoughts on?
Um, yeah, a couple of thoughts. So I second um, Mr. Dial on the kindergarten um, fees. I know that that was a big thing coming out of COVID. Um, and so I align with him on his thoughts there around uh, the town having voted to support that. Um, the transportation fee, I had voices before. Um, I think that we should just be careful about what we're projecting the savings we're going to be there. Um, so I think once you raise that, people over that a two mile radius, like, they may not sign up for the bus. Um, and so maybe that's part of it, of actually getting like a realistic number for people, like if you raise it enough, people are going to self-select out of it. But I just think if we're like going through the nickel and diming of the budget and everything, it may not be forty grand in savings on that. It could be like thirty or something. So I think it's similar to some of the other projections. Um, with the activity fee, is that a mandatory sixty dollars for the high schoolers? Or is that an opt-in, opt-out thing per student?
That's middle school sixty, isn't it?
Okay, so but every kid will be charged that, or is that an opt-in, opt-out?
It's
It's all students.
It's all students.
So but so if they're in a club, then they'll get charged. If they're not in a club, then they don't get charged?
Well, not necessarily, because if they attend events and things, it's all rolled into that activity fee.
Okay.
It would be awesome.
But if if a student's like, I'm not going to go to any events. Do they get, like, how are we monitoring that? Are they just going to get hit?
That's why it would be just a, for all students, because it would cover other things as well. So some of the events that the schools run that cost money to the, to the budget. Um, I, you know, if I think about the middle schools, they run a lot of full-day events or not, or partial day events field days and their Olympic days and they have a couple of days in the fall and all of those end up costing money and they're wonderful events and we don't want to not do them, but they do cost them. And so this would be a way, and that is, those are for all students.
Okay, so every student will get charged that. Okay. Um, and then in terms of facility fees, I guess my concern here is that as a town, we're seventeen field short. As a town, we have two full-size fields that people can participate on. Um, and so, and then knowing the costs right now, like you sign up for town basketball, you're at for almost four hundred, four hundred dollars for basketball. You're almost at four hundred for lacrosse right now. Um, I think town soccer's at pushing three at this point. So like these things start adding up. And so then your participation on sports is going to start dropping, I think. And so then, um, because they're going to have to continue to raise, like, we're going to get to like four fifty, five hundred dollars for a season for, you know, uh, like third grader to play soccer, which is, you know, kind of astronomical if you think about it. Um, so I just, like, I get raising those fees. They've been getting raised year over year. I feel like at this point, at least being on the lacrosse board, we've been getting hit with them higher and higher. Alumni field is the only field that has lights. Right? It's the only field, we only, the town only gets access to that field on Friday nights sometimes. And then Saturdays during the day, Sundays during the day. It's again, the only field that you can guarantee you can get access to on those days because DPW runs Milliken and if it's rained, that's out. So then it ends up becoming a huge issue on the town sports side of things. And so I think this one, I would get the boards involved on this one and have real conversations about what the impact is for what happens in the town sports um, on this one. Because it it's, it does become a bigger problem, a bigger burden that goes across the entire town on that. So again, I think like there's other ways to do this. If you're going to go after facilities, it's like let's get a really strong culture from an athletic standpoint and you can get that money through sponsorships as opposed to raising these fees and dinging everybody on the back end. Um, because I think people will just not play and participate. If that's the case, season after season, getting hit with four or five hundred dollar fees. So.
Just add to that. On the, on the building rental fees, one of the recommendations is to up the, our rate for custodian back end areas. Um, because they're not covering. So overtime rate for custodian is more than what we're charging.
No, and I get you on that. I, I, yeah. So I just, I think, all I'm saying is, I think a conversation with the boards to understand what the actual impact is going to be. Because I think it's really easy to sit there and be like, oh yeah, we'll raise these and that and everything. And that one, I think, is different for basketball, for all those indoor sports. We don't have a custodian. We don't have anyone out at the field during lacrosse games or soccer games. Um, and so I think that one specific needs to go to the basketball board to understand that. But.
I, I don't disagree. I just think it's hard for schools to absorb those, to lose money.
And I'm not advocating for the schools to lose money. I don't think any of the boards understood that the schools are losing money.
No.
You know, but um, and I know we're in a really difficult situation. I just, I think we're like attacking things that probably need to be discussed.
Okay, thank you. Is that all? Uh, thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Leskey?
Um, I think I'm trying to like, find that middle ground. Um, and and I think, I think about the word access and I think about public schools and that access is one of the most important things to public schools and I think while I see the raising as probably the most sort of tenable solution to our budget issues. Um, I also want to speak for those families in our community for whom um, multiple raises would create a financial hardship and would limit access um, to um, opportunities. And that being said, I've also heard bandied around a couple of times, like, well, you're making this like private school tuition. This is not like private school tuition. Even if you are a kindergarten family and you're paying every single other fee that's being put forward here, this is not private school tuition and you are getting an excellent education. And so I just want to be on the record for kind of clearing up that sort of misunderstanding and something that I've heard probably at least ten times. Um, because I think that's an important comment. And sometimes we have to pay for those things that are valuable to us and valuable to us as a community. And that's also part of our role as, as adults and community members is to support our schools. Um, and sometimes that has to be financially. So but, so I guess maybe I'm, I'm wondering how to kind of reconcile those two ideas of complete accessibility for all of our families and for all of our kids and funding our schools appropriately. And I guess maybe my question is about sliding scales and how many of these fees can be put on sliding scales in a way that feels equitable, that feels productive, that feels helpful, that doesn't create undue sort of bureaucratic burdens on the on the business office, such as a kindergarten fee, such as transportation fees, that I think there are probably families for whom that starts creeping up and they say, we can't do this, but we're also a two-parent working family and we need to get our kids to school. I mean, they can't walk because of where they live. I, I don't want that to be the burden um, for families in our community. Um, I think, you, you know, I think, gosh, all right, I'm not going to have the buses as backup anymore. But that's fine. You choose not to have the back, buses as backup anymore. Because I think there are families that just bust backup. Um, and and that's a totally different situation. Um, so I, I, it's not a solution. It's just sort of more of a comment.
But I think it, it's a really good point and I think philosophically, I'm very aligned. Um, the, I think it's important to note that all of this has um, accessible features. So we do collect, um, we encourage families to fill out their free and reduced lunch forms. There is such a misnomer about the purpose of a free and reduced lunch form. We have free lunch for the entire state of Massachusetts and we are very grateful to the governor for providing free lunch for the state of Massachusetts and for Cohasset. But when a family fills out the free and reduced lunch forms, they put, and they qualify, then that allows them access to the sliding scales that you're talking about. And that's for all fees. Um, it's for the fees that we're talking about and the other fees as well. Um, it's either for, for like AP tests, SAT tests, um, field trips, all of those things. And so it's really important that even though we have free lunch, that families who do need that support, fill out that free and reduced lunch form. And I will make like the small plug that filling out that form also can help us get more grant funding. So I wish they would change the name of the form because it is about so much more than lunch. It, it provides services to families who need those services and it potentially brings more money into the district. It was just sent out again by all the principals and so it should be in everybody's email. About last week, it was sent out and it's on our website. So anyone who's listening, you know, we would encourage you to, to fill out that one. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you, Ms. Leskey. We have a few more comments that came in from um, some community members that are participating virtually. A follow-up from Mrs. Rennie. She states that, um, she says, thank you for the initial explanation about how coaches' positions come about. Open parenthesis, although it raises other questions about fairness and resources, close parenthesis. Why is there a one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar difference? Are we overspending or over budgeting?
So currently, so like that slide was from FY twenty-four. So currently, the athletic account is negative five hundred thousand dollars. That will shift as we bring in all of the spring sports fees, as we bring in spring gate fees. Um, so it will be less than a hundred thousand dollars in the deficit. Um, and so I think it, it's a little bit of a combination. I don't know that it's overspending as much as um, similar to many of the other line items where there was a recognized need for additional funds to be budgeted for FY twenty-five. Um, that when those were not implemented, reductions didn't happen in other places. And so even though they weren't approved, it doesn't mean that we weren't still going to be spending that amount because that we just didn't, as a district, make those reductions that were necessary. So I, I, I think we are continuing to look at all of these things. Um, but if you look at our proposed FY twenty-six budget, we are proposing um, an increase to athletics because we are trying to budget appropriately, which means we are reducing in other places, or in this case, specifically with athletics, trying to increase the fees to offset the budgeted necessary number.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Shannon. Uh, Ms. Rennie, if you have any follow-up questions, just plug them in. Another comment from Mr. Kevin Heine of Fifty-seven Howe Road. Any transportation fee increase could put more of a burden on roads leading to, from the school campus. Most parents are already familiar with long drop-off slash pickup lines that spill over onto nearby streets and burden nearby neighborhoods. Furthermore, any revenue projections by increasing transportation fees is sending the wrong message by likely placing more individual cars on our already burdened town roads by families electing to opt out of paying higher fees. Like Mr. Heine is um, agreeing with some of the sentences Mrs. Hannah raised. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Heine.
Mr. Sher, can I have the floor?
Yes, please. Uh, just because it's going to be easy for me to miss the hand raise from you because of the way the computer's set up. Mr. Dial, just please just interrupt when you have something to say.
I'm, I'm, I'm good at that, so no problem. Um, I wanted to uh, respond to, to Ms. Leskey's uh, thoughts. I'm trying to find the middle road and I, and I agree with that. I hate these fees. I hate that we're having to have this conversation. Um, and so one question I'd, I'd like to have, I don't know if we do this, but is there a way for us to figure out the impact of these fees on, say, the average school family? You know, that's a two-kid family who plays sports and goes on field trips. And while I agree that it is a different order of magnitude uh, between what we're going to, that would show versus private school tuition, it's, the sentiment is, is real. It's a, it's a significant amount of mon- money. We, we just approved a field trip that would be a thousand dollars. We approved these other trips that are several thousand dollars. People with multiple kids have to, you know, do that, or they don't have access to those experiences and they're, and they're left behind. So you know, there's, there's a, there's a real fiscal component that uh, that, you know, all these fees um, deal with our families, that, that, that it has on our families. And I don't think we're going to be able to fee ourselves to a, to a balanced budget. The problem that we have is a structural one. Our utilities costs are too high. Our, you know, required special education spending is too high. I, I think the solution to this is not trying to Band-Aid it by raising fees, but rather revisiting what our budget needs are and working with the town, and I mean, the town as the, you know, citizens of the town to get a, an approved budget that um, is potentially through an override or whatever, whatever platform that meets the needs of our schools. Uh, and we, we've talked about this for years, since I've been on the committee, that we've, we've, you know, been lightly funded. Uh, but I think now we're underfunded, not necessarily because of uh, anything in particular, but just everything's gotten more expensive. So you know, I think we need to have that discussion as a town because these expenses are the expenses that I think are rightly borne by the community as a whole and not by subsets of communities based on what uh, access they want to the, to the town. So I guess I'm just setting up the idea that, you know, from, from my perspective, Ms. Leskey, the balance in this is is not necessarily landing on the fees, but looking forward and ahead to having a larger conversation with uh, with our select board and um, Ms. Mar uh, about how we can, how we can increase the, the town's um, funding of our schools. Because that's, that's really where, where I think we are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial. I had a few points to make. With regards to the bus parking, so I think this is the first time I've heard definitively that we've decided to do that, that we're going to be able to make that happen.
So I think we've been talking.
And by the way, what I mean by make it happen is we're talking about relocating the buses to school property, but that would require us to move them somewhere else during the day, then shuttle drivers back and forth because their cars would be elsewhere. So there'd be this logistics challenge that I didn't know that we had overcome.
We haven't overcome that piece of it yet. We're still exploring. We actually talked about that in our budget subcommittee meeting and Ms. Owen is reaching out to some folks who, a couple of years ago, there was a reach out to a bunch of places, but we were looking for overnight parking. So we're going to reopen those conversations to look for parking for the during the day. And Ms. Mar, you have a. Okay. And so I think it, I think even if we can't find a place, we still need to bring the buses back. It would mean we lose some student parking. But I think spending $48,000 on bus parking when we have this much of a budget deficit is not necessarily fiscally responsible. But we are continuing to look for a place that can house the buses from 9:30 to 2:30. And I think we have ways of, you know, we've talked about one of the buses would be the bus that brings people back here. And we would have a place for the one bus to sit here during the day that doesn't take away students. Manage that.
Okay. All right. But we haven't yet found, and maybe Ms. Mar could offer this.
Yeah. So I just found out this morning that Craig, Mr. McCullen, you might remember a few years ago, the MBTA was engaged for the parking lot next to Old Colony, that that center. And I think that offer can still be on the table and it might delay some of the previous concerns if it's only during the daytime. And all they wanted to know was how many spaces and the number at the time was low four figures annually, which is certainly attractive, you know, to lease some space there. So I don't know if that's if that's come up.
And that's on the list of places that Sue was going to reach out to.
Okay, so that could serve as the daytime location and realize a vast savings. Okay, because that was the missing piece of the puzzle that I hadn't no, knew we had identified yet is that.
We just talked about reaching out to there and a couple of other places on Tuesday.
Because it's not, it's not a permanent parking solution because there's no facilities there.
Correct.
So that's I guess I want to go on the record to be clear about this issue because I think there's some misinformation about the our decision to have leased private space for the buses. So we need to make sure that there's facilities for the drivers, right? And there has to be space for them to park their cars. The town used to allow us to park in the DPW area near the transfer station. It doesn't happen anymore. So we need to understand that the school buses are a town asset. Okay. It's not like the schools and the towns, like this is a town asset. The town did not have a location for us. We did not have a place to park the buses. So I think folks were agitated by the fact that we had seemingly been recklessly allocating $50,000 to you know, private parking area. First of all, didn't start at that amount, but second of all, there wasn't an alternative. So we're trying to find this alternative, which in and of itself is suboptimal because we're going to have to be transferring drivers. So it's just a creative solution that was not, that's not something we would have considered when we weren't in some sort of fiscal crisis, but now every dollar matters. So for individuals thinking that that was just like haphazardly done, it wasn't. We had a town parking location for the buses and it was taken away. So we didn't have that anymore. And we're trying to find one. So Mrs. Mar just offered one potential option that we can look at. It's not going to be free, but it's going to be hopefully a lot cheaper than what we're currently paying and still going to require some, some logistics to get drivers to and from. And it can't serve as the permanent location because there's no facilities. But that's edifying and and that's optimistic. You know, I'm optimistic about that. So it's encouraging. Athletics. I had a question about athletics and thinking about all these fees for athletics like, so I do not have children in high school, so I have not yet confronted school teams, right? I guess I have to an extent a little bit in middle school, but but they operate in a similar fashion to the private sports and town sports that my kids are currently participating in. They're just, so they're they're self-funded. They're like the the parents are charged per participant. And that includes the uniform fee and whatever other fees that they, you know, whatever cost they have per sport. So I feel like is, would it be, would it be sensible to consider that type of model? Where then we're not worrying about uniforms. Every kid's going to get their name on their uniforms. They get brand new uniforms and, you know, everything everything sort of turns over every year. You have an identified amount of money that you need for that sport and then it gets divided up by the number of participants and that's how much it is to play ice hockey or field hockey or softball or whatever. And that's, and then we're not worried about, you know, is the allocation fair? Are the football uniforms nicer than the lacrosse uniforms? Are, you know, where is the money going for these athletic fees? Is it fairly allocated? Like, have we ever given thought to sort of like individualizing this a little bit more? And maybe Ms. Hannon could shed some light on the wisdom of this. I don't know. It was just something I thought about because that's, that's how I, all my, I pay a price for my children to participate in sports right now. They're not school sports, they're town sports or club sports, but it costs what it costs. And then we get all the uniforms and everything's new and everything fits. And I'm not worried that I'm paying for someone else's new uniforms. Have we ever thought about that, doing it that way? And Mrs. Mar, you may be able to offer some, some insight into this too, because of your, your history with the school committee before that predated my service. So would that make sense at all?
I, I guess we could look at that. I wonder if we would find that some sports are even more expensive than what we're currently proposing. That would be my greatest fear, especially when you add in things like uniform. We don't like that's something we save for several years and then we purchase new uniforms and so it saves money. If we went to every year, it would cost more money. You know, I think we're also talking about referees and all of those things. I, I mean, we could look at what it costs for each sport. I think it's also hard because we don't know how many kids are going to play each sport each year. And so that is also, we would be playing a guessing game every year with every sport. Like you have no idea how many freshmen are signing up for sports until they sign up.
Or we'd make the sign up earlier. Like make the decision earlier, you know? And it's like, just because, look, what you're saying is the point, right? If we have to realize economies by not buying uniforms every year.
Yeah.
But if there's issues with that, we can resolve that very easily. People might have to pay a little bit more, but you're, you're getting your own uniform, new uniform, the whatever size you want, your name on it, your number. Okay. And all those problems are solved. You're going to pay a little bit of a premium, but that's how you get that. And then you're not worried that your money is being allocated because you're a swimmer and that may be less expensive than the football and you feel like all your money is going to the football team. And just I think there's some concerns about that, like this, like I think there's this like transparency issue or concern about like the fees and how they're allocated. But I feel like I could just simplify it. Yeah, it might be a premium. I'm not suggesting this is what we do. I'm just expecting. Saying it might be.
We could look at, I think it's going to be very expensive for some of the sports or than what we're proposing.
On the uniform front, you could have come in as a freshman and like you keep the uniform design the same. I buy my Hannah jersey and they keep it for four years and then it just keeps the design the exact same.
It doesn't work with boys. They grow.
Yeah, well, I, and I, I get that, but then as, as like a mom, I'm like, okay, great. I have to buy it after two years. Like because he grew, like I have to buy shoes all the time because my daughter's feet keep growing, right? Like, so.
Do you want me to jump in now with my, my thoughts?
Ms. Mar, I wanted to jump in an hour ago.
Sorry. That's not my meaning. So I'm just going to, I'm going to make just one comment as a select board member regarding your deficit this year. Whatever you can save only allows us to help you more next year. And the longer we don't know that number, the tougher it gets for us because we do have free cash, we have competing interests for free cash, we have select organ town priorities that are banging on the door and we're, we're kind of keeping everyone at bay until we get your final best number. So I can't promise every dollar you save this spring will be a dollar for FY26, but we will do our best on that front. And that's a message I think we've stated publicly. So I'm not speaking out of turn on that. I mentioned about the MBTA parking lot. We talk about the bus parking lot a lot. And what can we do? And where can we go? And we all know this town intimately, there's not a lot of land. I mean, it's 30% water. So we, we do discuss it. We do brainstorm on what we can do for the, for the buses and it's not off our radar. I just want you to know that. We haven't come up with anything other than MBTA, but that's that. So, so regarding athletics and fees in general, I had a, I had a meeting with superintendent Shannon and expressed my thoughts about attrition, which some of you have mentioned in terms of fees get too high to get families get hit with, you know, additional bus fees, parking fees, this fee, that fee. I, I understand it. I think we always had a practice of regularly reviewing fees, but they should always be reviewed, you know, and and upgraded during the normal course of school business. I know for athletics and I, I know that that subject best in it for decades here in Cohasset. We haven't raised the fee since 2008. It's been the same. When it was initiated in 2007, it was $150. And in 2008, it went to 250 and it's never moved. So I think a review is good. Your benchmarking is good on that. So that's all I really want to say about fees. What I want to talk about in athletics is, and again, this is my perspective as a citizen, as a select board member. Because I've been coming up here to go to events since prior to 2006. And I will say that I have seen an escalation in game day staff over the years. And I would challenge, do we need a detail, a police detail at every event? Indoor, outdoor. Okay. Because you pay for that. Sometimes I see two policemen here. I don't know if one's on patrol and just stops by to catch the game or not, but do we really need two detail? Do we need four people taking tickets at football games at 75 or 80 or $90 a game? Do we really need four people for the 150 people that come to a game? Do we need two people and an administrator and an athletic director at basketball games? I would really encourage that department to, to look at staffing during game days and what it really needs. Because I have seen it grow over time. Now there's certain areas you have to have at a basketball table. You need a timer, you need a scorer and you need a 30 second clock. It's now 35 second clock. First, you need three. But do you need all the other people? Do, do we really need with a quality and caliber of the kids in this district? Do we really need administrative overview? Supervising what is already good behavior? Okay. And those, that's, those staff members get stipended. Now, sometimes if you're playing a big rival, if it's a big event and you expect capacity crowds, I get it. But the run of the mill Tuesday, Friday basketball games, I'm not quite sure. So I'd encourage you to, to look at, at those game, what I would call game day expenses. Utilities, spring sports haven't started and I'm glaring at the lights on alumni field. I don't know why they're on. But they're on. And do they need to be? I drive by here all the time and, you know, the student parking lot is dark and the middle school is lit up like a Christmas tree all night long. Cause I drive by it at quarter six in the morning and the lights are on. So I don't know if that can can be, you know, accommodated. I hear that your usage is down and the rates are up, but I think these are simple things. I would encourage you to resume the practice that maybe Mr. McCullen remembers. We used to have season end athletic reports. Where the athletic director would come in and present the prior season team by team and would go through the roster sizes, would go through all, all the accolades and the highs and the lows of the season. Give the shout outs to the kids that, you know, and the teams that do well because our sports teams do exceptionally, exceptionally well. And then go through the budgets. Okay, football, we had 100 kids. We used to have 100 kids. At, at 250, it's 25 grand. We have this many coaches. This is what the gridiron does. This is, this is what the gate fees are. This is what and they would break it down. And I think it's very helpful. So you don't get into this kind of situation where now we're trying to, to scurry along and try to figure it out. I have examples I can, I can send to you if you wish, somewhere in my archives. Another thing I would comment on is in 2008, the district was in financial distress and I have someone, yeah, I had someone, John was in high school. And I was involved with basketball boosters, gridiron club, Citro Cohasset youth football. I think that was it at the time. And so Ron Ford, who was the athletic director at the time, he called all the boosters in. And he said, we're cutting JV sports. We don't have the budget. We don't have the money. And we all said, no, that's not good. You can't, because you can never get it back. Once you cut something, you can, it's very hard to get it back in. So he laid out every sport, every JV, how many contests, whatever. JV coaches, assistant coach and the contract is considered. They don't get the head coach stipend. They get the assistant coach sometimes. Instead of three football officials, you'll have two. So, so there were different financial implications for JV sports. And he said, can you help? So we all looked at what we did and we came up with a way to not 100% fund JV sports, but to support the program in a one year crisis. And we were very clear that this is a one year kind of thing. And what happened was we did a little extra fundraising. We cut out some of the swag that the kids get. I see what they get now. And the banners and the posters and the gifts on senior nights and the gifts at the banquet and the flowers from Winston's for the moms instead of Trader Joe's. I mean, it's kind of snowballed, which is it's true. Right? Bokke from Trader Joe's is a lot less expensive. You have five seniors. You're talking about $500 that gets spent on, on flowers. So I think getting the booster groups together and, and saying, what can you do? A lot of them already support maybe a halftime assistant coach out of their fundraising. I think it's worth a conversation because what's the worst thing they can say is no. And then I think you should look at your subscriptions to your sub varsity sports and say, and how many kids from varsity play down on a JV? And how many JV kids play? I mean, you, you might not, you might not have enough. You know, for, for true JV. But that's up to signups and things like that. The thing about signups is kids can sign up. It doesn't mean they're committed. They're not, you know, in June, you sign up for your winter sports, doesn't mean you're going to play. You know, you get a cross coach, coach recruiting, you got a football coach saying, get into the weight room. You know, you never played hockey in college. So okay, I'm going to do that and not to play hockey. Those conversations happen. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We just have a few more comments that came in from community members that are participating virtually. Stephanie Saunders at 10 Stratford Terrace states that if we are able to park the buses at the MBTA, you could reach out to either the landlord at Old Colony Square or the owner of workstation to ask about the use of facilities. Open parenthesis, bathrooms are shared amongst businesses there, close parenthesis. So there's a, a thought about how to address the facility's need.
Just the facility's need would be addressed through here because they would park the buses over there, come back here to get their cars and use our facilities.
Think she may have been saying like, if we wanted to avoid the logistics challenge and just use that as like the full time location. Perhaps, maybe not. That was my. But yes, thank you for offering that because that is the point of it. What logistics, logistics challenge involves. The next comment is from Laura Soderberg at 16 Black Horse Lane. She says, so many of our students play. She says, so many of our students play sports and participate in activities. Finding themselves too busy to attend other athletic games, clubs, et cetera. What average number of activities per school year do you anticipate students might attend for the one hundred dollar activity fee? What assumed cost per activity was assumed to arrive at this fee? I find my kids don't have a lot of opportunities to attend other activities given their busy schedules. This fee plus increasing the athletics fee is a lot. So. I think she's primarily questioning like the calculus. That we employed in arriving at the. Fee amount. And I was not personally involved in that, so I would defer to someone who was.
So some of it was by looking at other areas per participation fees. But also looking at, you know, all of our, well, middle and high school have clubs. Some of those are stipended positions and some of them aren't. So even some of those that need during the day are stipended because of the activity that happens outside of the school day as well. So it was looking at some of those costs in running some of our clubs. It was looking at some gate fees. And I know kids are busy, but we were also trying to find ways to encourage students. To, to start coming to games. We felt like in the conversation, there was a large push. And part of this came from students actually in the forums for the strategic plan. To, to not have students have to bring money to the games so that they could come and watch their peers. I realize that this is still incorporating some of that gate fee. But it was from the student's perspective, it was always having to find the five dollars or whatever it is to come. And we do have an issue where students don't come to watch one another. And I do think Laura is right, is that sometimes it's because our kids are so busy and they, they're doing other things. But where we can, we thought this would be a way of, of doing that. So it does incorporate a few games per year. And then additionally, some of the things that we talked about, like some of the middle school events, some of the high school events that we don't charge for. That do end up costing the schools some, some money.
Thank you for that question, more comments, sort of. I would just add that, to me, I think we've identified a lot of the competing interests here. There's, it's a, it's a complicated issue, especially in a year where we're struggling to confront a shortfall. I mean, I think Mrs. Leskey has kind of brought up the sort of accessibility and interest elements of this. There's also the ability to maintain our current programming, which I think is, is moving in the right direction. I think our schools are performing well right now. And then there's the consideration of the fact that the public schools are an employer. Right? So probably the largest employer in town. So there are people's careers that attach, that are attached to, and, and, you know, obviously people's livelihoods. So that is, that is a factor to consider. And so I view these fees, nobody likes fees, they're essentially taxes and we already pay a lot of taxes. But I view them as reduction mitigation tools. And the more that we approve, the less reductions we have to confront. Though some may make more economic sense and practical sense than others. I'm also becoming increasingly concerned about the timing of all of this. Like, I wonder if it's, if, if, if some of them are too sudden. If we're not, Mrs. Hannah raised the point earlier about, you know, collaborating a little bit more with some of the. Sports boards prior to increasing fees. The counter, I think our superintendent pointed out is that, you know. The object, the objective fact is that we're, we're losing money on them. So it's like, there's not, it's a dire circumstance and that's not, there's not too much of a conversation we have. But I think that like, there may be, I don't know, in, in that sort of, in that arena, it may make sense to. Explore that. You know, for, for another fiscal year. And so it wouldn't be contributing to, it wouldn't help us mitigate reductions this year. But it's just a consideration, it's just, it's, it's a factor to consider. So I think everyone just, I, I just want to make sure everyone realizes how, how complicated this is. It's just not a matter of like, I think that when we say revenue source, it's, it's a little misleading. I think it makes people feel as though it's like, we're just trying to make more money off of our families. And that's not at all what we're trying to do. To me, the, it's, it's to, to mitigate the amount of reductions we have. Because I, I really value the staff that we have here. I've come to know a lot of them personally. I see, I mean, they, they're the lifeblood of the school, the reason the school's performed so well is because of our human resources. So I, I would, I would hate to, I mean, I, I am absolutely completely adamantly opposed to reducing student-facing positions. If, as a community, we can come together and pay a few extra fees to ensure that doesn't happen. Like, if we were to, you know, if there was, you know, a talented teacher that was, you know, a little junior. And by contract, maybe the first on the chopping block, but they're really talented and they're a huge asset. That's, that is, that's non-negotiable in my, in my opinion. I mean, we don't want to be losing those, those academic assets. So it's just, we have to consider that as a community. We live in a town that is very small, has no commercial base. And our, our schools are just costing more to run than the town, I think, is able to afford to give them right now. I think we do the best we can with it. But it's, it's obviously a major problem this year. So it, it's just, these are all just proposals. We're going to continue to, 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 to consider them as we go into the special meeting to make some decisions. I think they're going to be hard decisions to make. So, and I think you have some homework to get some, some members and some information back to us. That we can make as an informed decision as possible. And again, I just like invite everyone in the community that feels strongly about this to tune in. We'll, we'll advertise the, the, the meeting and how you can participate in the special meeting. And Mr. Dial, did I see you just appear there? Do you feel like saying something?
Yeah, I just wanted to underscore your request of Ms. Owen. If, there, there's two things that it would be helpful for me is, is one, that chapter seventy figure on the kindergarten. And then two, if there's any modeling we can get on what an average family would pay in fees, what they're paying now and what they'd pay, assuming we make, make all these changes. I think that would be really helpful, because, you know, actually, to be honest, I mean, I see all these numbers and it feels big. But you know, maybe if, maybe it, when we do that modeling, it's not as big as it seems. So I think that would be really helpful.
Just as a quick, if, if these fees were voted for. It would cost me personally an additional six hundred and sixty dollars. And so we can figure that out for different, you know, a middle school. But it's hard to, it depends on how many sports each child plays. It depends on if they drive to school, it depends. So we can start to figure out some maybes, but just as an example, I will have a senior at the high school. So I will pay for parking, I will pay for two sports to be played. That, and that's over and above what, that actually doesn't, it's actually going to be more. Because I just factored in the extra one hundred dollars per sport. So add another five hundred dollars onto that for what I already pay. So that's eleven hundred and sixty dollars. And there's a reality to, and so, and then the athletic or the activity fee. So I'm just one family with one kid. But that's what it could look like.
And, and I think those were some of the points that Mrs. Leskey and Santa were making. We got to consider that's an important factor, too. We don't, we certainly don't want to, equally important is not to deprive kids of experiences, right? We don't want to do that. We don't want to reduce our force and lose great assets. We also want to make sure that, and we don't want to adversely impact our current programming. We also don't want to do those things, you know, at the cost of losing student participation, because that's the whole point. So it's a, I think it's a tough balancing act. As we come into this, this next meeting to make some decisions here about how we're going to handle this. So any last minute comments on the fees issue before we move on? Saying none, we'll move on to the committee, community relations and communication block. Which requests any updates of any supplementary liaison positions. You can certainly try those at will. Thank you, Mrs. Mar for your participation. No reports from anyone?
It was, in our subcommittee, we did start to discuss one item. As a, as a potential for offsetting our budget deficit. That could have some ramifications around contracts we currently have in place. And so it might be my recommendation at a time convenient that we discuss that in the executive session. To see if it's something we might consider.
All right, so perhaps can the subcommittee notify Ms. Saritas that we need to do that? And CC, Superintendent Shannon, so that we can make sure to get that on, so that you and I are reminded.
I have it on my list for.
So, never mind.
Next Thursday's meeting.
It's already, Superintendent Shannon's, one step ahead. Thank you. Anything else? I, I, I do need to reach out to Jason Earls, the School Facilities Committee. He was requesting some direction. A few days ago, and I have forgotten to call him back and I need to do that. So Mr. Earls, if you're watching, I apologize, we'll be in touch. We'll get the School Facilities Committee back in the mix here. Okay, seeing no other updates, we'll move into the School Committee Governance Block. I am not aware of any topics that were posted that brought, that brought to my attention tonight. There are no minutes to approve this meeting. Anyone have any suggestions for future agenda items?
Process of audit for the athletic department. So I think giving transparency to people on what that looks like. I don't think any parents have been communicated about it. There's concerns that there was one big meeting with all the athletes at once, where it's not really like, folks, people are going to speak up. And then there's forty-eight kids that were out at a model UN during that. So they didn't get to participate, but there's no communication on if they wanted to, how they could. So I think just giving some, a line of sight to everybody to understand, like, what is this audit? What's the basis of it? Like, if it's replacing or taking place of having a committee? Like, we owe it to people to be transparent about how we're doing it.
So we can provide an update, Superintendent Shannon. But I also think Principal Scott had recently sent out an email about, maybe that's what Mrs. Hannah was talking about. There was, there was going to be a meeting or a series of meetings.
He sent it to families.
But to high school families only, probably.
Yeah, and there's some middle school families that have a lot of concerns too, based off of everything they heard and everything, so.
Okay, so. Maybe, maybe you can speak with Principal Scott and we can sort of rebroadcast whatever messaging he. I, I just don't remember exactly what it was. I remember seeing the email. It was about the.
Yeah, it was.
The audit, exactly, who was doing it, what it was about. So maybe we need to broadcast that a little bit better. Maybe, maybe Mr. Mills could send it out if there's some middle school families as they approach high school or concerned about it.
Yeah, I, I mean, in all honesty, I don't think we considered families who haven't had the opportunity yet to participate in high school sports. Because they don't. So in some of those eighth graders, yeah. So I think we could reach out to the families of eighth graders who participated in high school sports through waivers. But I think it's really a review of the, the department. The department as people have had the opportunity to participate in it.
So, look, while we, I mean, you know, whether you're in third grade or seventh grade, you know, you're heading to high school, hopefully in Cohasset. Maybe there's a, I mean, I, I know that Principal Scott's current message was certainly tailored towards the high school families. Maybe there is some way we can broadcast the information, because everyone listens to school committee meetings. It's been a topic that's been discussed. Maybe there's some way you and I and, you know, Mrs. Leskey or you and the principals can collaborate on how to get that sort of messaging about. I think Mrs. Hannah is just asking for, just sort of a, a general update. Because I think only high school families are aware of it. So maybe there's a way we can sort of like broadcast that, some general information about it. And, and when, I, I don't remember, I don't, I don't think it's commenced yet. It's a to, to be commenced in the near future. So once it start, once there's like a substantive update, we can probably, you can probably work that into your superintendent update at some point. Or Principal Scott can come and, and, and talk about it. But for now, at least some messaging, just informing people of it that are not part of the high school community.
And I think also understanding like what we're doing about the concerns for anonymity. You know, if somebody does want to come forward and talk, like, how are we making sure that they can come forward in an anonymous fashion?
That I think was addressed in Principal Scott's email. I think I remember reading something about that. I think he, he mentioned that you could like have private discussions, like one-on-one discussions with the person. Again, I'm like just going off memory, it was like a longer email. Which you didn't see because you don't have.
So, but I did get pinged by quite a lot of families that I don't think also. So.
Yeah, so, so point well taken. So I think we can figure out a way to, to broadcast the information a little bit.
So high school families that didn't see it?
They, they said their child got pulled in, but that they have gotten, they are not aware of any information.
What? They didn't get the parent email either.
I mean, that's what they're telling me, so I'm going with that.
Yeah, and, and that's why, but I would, I would wonder, I would have those people reach out. Because I wonder if they're getting any of our communication and any of the high school communication. Because they should be getting, like, because it's all being sent the same way. And so if they're not getting that, then they're also not getting Mr. Scott's email or newsletters. And, you know, SAT updates and parent form updates. So we want to make sure that they're getting everything. And so if they're not getting things, they should reach out and we should make sure they're in our system.
That's a really good point, because it was obvious to me when I saw it, like, I get it, like, you know, so it was like, it was apparent. So that's true. So that's, that's a possibility.
Yeah, it was a separate email.
Okay, is that all, Ms. Hannah, on future agenda items? Anyone else? Mr. Dial, we'll get to you. I know you have one. You're after Mr. Carr.
There's a request from an outside party for one set of minutes from last year. Jeff has been in touch with me, I'm researching that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. All right, Mr. Dial, future agenda item?
Yes, future agenda, um, just all this budget talk reminded me, it's in raising Mr. Earls. I would like to have a budget item at some point about the future planning for the stabilization fund. What our planned expenses are over like a five, maybe ten-year period. And how we're going to be deploying that fund now that we're going to be dipping into it for the, the roof. And, you know, making sure that we've got a, a longer-term maintenance plan. And I, I think it's been on the agenda, but it'd be good to get an update at some point.
Okay, that kills two birds with one stone, Mr. Dial, thank you. I think that's how we're going to get the School Facilities Committee in here. And we'll have Ms. Owen at some point in the not-too-distant future, put together a spreadsheet on the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. That's a good idea. Okay, mine is homework. I'd like to explore like homework a little bit. I don't know if we need to do it at the start at the committee level, like, we might want to. Start at the subcom level, level or something. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm starting to question like. You and I have talked about this before, like, we want to make sure that the homework assignments are value-laden, they're not just like busy work. I feel like the kids, especially like elementary school students and even middle school students who are experiencing a huge. A sixth-grade students who are experiencing like a huge transition. I just don't know how important it is to do, you know, to have like, you know. An hour's worth of homework or forty minutes of homework or whatever it is after a full school day. I do like that a lot of them use their utility period to do some work and that's great, because you want them to not have just nothing to do. That's, I, I like that aspect of it. They're in school, they're working, that makes a lot of sense to me. A lot of them play sports, a lot of the older kids like in middle school get the later time slots for those things. So I think it can be a lot. So I'd, I'd like to talk about that. Maybe we don't have it as a future agenda item. But maybe we continue our conversation about homework and like what our policy is. I'd like to develop sort of a definitive policy on, on homework in the district. Some teachers assign it, some teachers don't, so.
So can I just?
Of course, yeah.
So I, both elementary principals have been talking with staff and with parents around homework. And so I think letting them do their, their thing is important. And I think it's something that, yes, continuing the conversation and seeing where that may land potentially in a strategic plan. Because I think it's very much a part of a, it's a part of a much bigger picture. Than just an isolated piece of the education.
Now that you mention that, I remember you saying that. And now that you mention that, I remember you saying that when I brought it up before, is the strategic plan? Okay, fair enough. Okay, so that may be that, like I said, maybe it's, it's best addressed as sub, subcom, maybe it's best addressed as a strategic planning issue. That sounds good. So we can take that off. That's good. Just as long as it's on the radar, because I want that to be like a value leading experience, not just busy work that keeps kids up later or, you know, gives them more work to do after a full school day and they're exhausted. And then lastly. I'd like to do a Metco presentation. We had a Metco presentation, I don't know, maybe two or three years ago. Various students came in, past and present, we're going to have to coordinate with Miss Gett and Skarle. And they, we, we had a really critical discussion about our programming, because I think that some of those students still confront a lot of issues that. You know, it's, it's, it's not just all sunshine and rainbows for them. And we need to know about negative experiences to improve the. Quality of life for those students. Transportation, treatment, you know, respect amongst peers, anything that they're feeling like alienation, any, anything like that. We need to know about it. And then also I'd like to explore. Revitalizing the host program. I know that. It, it, I, I, I don't know what Miss Gett and Skarle, her current. Position is on that, but. I know it's been sort of like a. A challenging issue in the past, but I, I think, I, I really think it can be a great program. I think that the participation has been. Challenging the past, but if we roll it out the right way and collaborate on it with enough planning, I think it could be a good thing. I think it was a really, really, I think it's like a very. Mutually advantageous situation. For families, could add a lot of value. So I'd like to think about that. And maybe we could incorporate that as part of the. Metco presentation, like a discussion on the host program and, or maybe that just occurs offline and, you know, we think about. The pros and cons. There's costs that we might not be able to incur. I don't know, right? But at the very least, let's, let's, and I have it on my list. So when we're talking, you know, I'd like to get that Metco presentation going again. I think it was last time it was done in the spring. It was good. It's an appropriate time, I think, towards the end of the year. So. Maybe in, maybe in late April or early May or something. That's all I have for me. Any other last minute comments? No, there's no reason to move into executive session tonight, so just ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion's been made by Mrs. Hannah. Is there a second? Second by Miss Leskey. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. Sentience, motion unanimous carries. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Thanks, everyone.